Good evening, everyone. City Council is now in session. Please stand for the invocation by Councilmember Butler Barlow, which will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
Let us pray. Tonight's invocation is a poem by Amanda Gorman called "Before Us." We lift our gazes not to what stands between us, but what stands before us. We close the divide because we know to put our future first, we must first put our differences aside. Amen.
Amen.
The Freedom of Information Act certification is required at this time. Madam Clerk,
will you please present the resolution for consideration?
A resolution certifying the closed meeting of April 17, 2024 pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3712 now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Suffolk hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of Virginia law, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the City Council of the City of Suffolk in the closed meeting.
Council motion would be in order. Councilman Fawcett?
To approve, Mayor.
Got a motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett. Councilman Williams?
Second it, Mayor.
Second from Councilman Williams. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Will now move to approval of the minutes from the February 21, 2024 Work Session in Regular Meeting, and a motion would be in order. Councilman Williams?
Move for approval.
Got a motion for approval from Councilman Williams. Vice Mayor Ward?
Second.
Second from Vice Mayor Ward. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Will now move to special presentations. We do have two special presentations this evening. The first one is a proclamation in recognition of Week of the Young Child, and that will be followed by a proclamation in recognition of National Crime Victims Week.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, as noted by the mayor this evening, the first proclamation is in recognition of the Week of the Young Child, which extends from April 6 through April 12, and is served throughout the Commonwealth and across the country. At this time, I'd like to call Mark Furlough to the podium. Mark's already there, and members of, I believe, the Suffolk Early Childhood Commission.
Madam Clerk, will you please read the proclamation?
Whereas all young children deserve quality early learning environments that support them as capable and competent lifelong learners, and whereas nurturing parents, quality and accessible childcare, and early education programs build strong brains during the critical years from birth to age five, and whereas the Suffolk Early Childhood Development Commission, the Suffolk Public Library, and the Virginia Association for the Education of Young Children, and other community organizations in conjunction with the National Association for the Education of Young Children are celebrating the 53rd anniversary of Week of the Young Child, and whereas these organizations are working to improve equitable early learning opportunities, including early literacy programs, that can provide a foundation of learning for children, and whereas early childhood educators and public policies that support early learning for all young children's futures are important elements of education. Now therefore, I, Michael D. Dooman, Mayor of the City of Suffolk, Virginia, do hereby proclaim the week of April 6, 2024, through April 12, 2024, as Week of the Young Child in Suffolk, Virginia, and encourage all residents to make sound investments in early childhood development, and witness whereof I've herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Suffolk to be affixed this 17th day of April in the year of our Lord 2024.
Thank you, Mayor. As Chair of the Early Childhood Development Commission, it's my pleasure to accept this proclamation on behalf of the commission. We're incredibly fortunate to have a council that supports the well-being of children in our community. It's the ECDC's mission to ensure that every young child in Suffolk develops to their fullest potential. The Week of the Young Child is an annual celebration sponsored by the National Association of Education of Young Children. The purpose of the Week of the Young Child is to focus public attention on the needs of the young children and their families, and to recognize the early childhood programs and services that meet those needs. In 2024, Week of the Young Child took place April 6 through the 12, and this year, we are challenging the entire Suffolk community to recognize the importance of high-quality early learning and the critical role early childhood educators play in a child's development and learning. ECDC continues to advocate and support our early childhood workers and families, and the families they serve. During the past year, ECDC has created a resource room in the North Suffolk Library where early childhood educators can get access to material, high-quality materials, and collaborate with one another. We offered free curriculum services and support for Family Day home educators, along with access to the entire Stream 3 curriculum for all educators by way of the ECDC Resource Room, removed cost barriers for local educators to access training, distributed high-quality materials through ECDC Mini Grant Awards, expanded our commission to become more inclusive of underrepresented, underrepresented voices. Finally, this year, in celebration of the Week of the Young Child, ECDC has launched a new award-winning learning tool that prepares children ages three to six for kindergarten proficiency. Miss Humblebee's Academy is an online and offline curriculum that supports reading, physical fitness, social-emotional learning, STEM-based concepts, along with other core subjects. As of April 1, any parent or educator with a Suffolk Public Library card can access this premium learning tool at no cost. In closing, I will ask that all ECDC members present, stand. I guess they're already standing, though.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, would you please provide an overview of our next proclamation?
Yes, Mayor. This proclamation is recognition of Suffolk Crime Victims Rights Week, which extends from April 21 through April 27, and is served throughout the Commonwealth and across the country. At this time, I'd like to call our representatives of the Commonwealth Attorney's Office to the podium.
Madam Clerk, will you please read the proclamation?
Whereas since the passage of the Victims of Crime Act of 1984, and through the dedicated work of advocates, lawmakers, and victim service providers, there is a growing array of services and resources available to victims and their loved ones, and whereas identifying, reaching, and serving all victims of crime is essential, especially those from groups who often have less access to restorative services and fewer avenues to pursue justice, and whereas National Crime Victims Rights Week provides an opportunity to ensure that accessible and appropriate services are offered to all victims of crime, and whereas the Suffolk Commonwealth's Attorney's Office Victim Witness Program is dedicated to supporting victims and survivors in the aftermath of crime. Now therefore, I, Michael D. Dooman, Mayor of the City of Suffolk, Virginia, do hereby proclaim the week of April 21, 2024, through April 27, 2024, as National Crime Victims Rights Week, and witness whereon to I've herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Suffolk to be affixed this 17th day of April in the year of our Lord 2024.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, good evening. I guess my first order of business is probably what you're wondering. You know that I'm not the Commonwealth's Attorney for the City of Suffolk. I'm the chief deputy Commonwealth's Attorney. Our Commonwealth's Attorney is probably en route back to Suffolk. She was attending, speaking of victims, a seminar about retail theft, and how to try to address that issue that appears to be rising unfortunately. But I am here. The Suffolk Commonwealth's Attorney's Office appreciates that the City of Suffolk recognizes that Crime Victims Rights Week is a matter of great importance and worthy of announcing. As I heard stated, this year's week is April 21 through April 27 of 2024. The theme is the following: How Would You Help? Options, Services, and Hope for Crime Victims. I'd like to take this moment to invite everyone who's under the sound of my voice to our local kickoff event, which is scheduled for this Saturday, April 20, 2024. It starts at 9:00 a.m., and it will conclude at noon. The location will be at Lake Mead Park, located here in the City of Suffolk, at 201 Hollylawn Parkway, Suffolk, Virginia. And I have several persons with me tonight from our Victim Witness Division that I would like to recognize. We have the Victim Witness Director, Katie Gardner. We have Assistant Victim Witness Director, Niana Whitley. Assistant Victim Witness Director, Michelle Hearn. And we have our Victim Witness Program assistants, Angie Owen and Sherri Wright. Now, at our function, we're going to have some crime survivors who are going to be sharing their unfortunate experience with the criminal justice system. We are going to have a vendor there. We do have security of a truck that will be serving cupcakes for those who are there as well. We would, in essence, welcome everyone's support there, not so much for the Suffolk Commonwealth's Attorney's Office, but more so for the victims who will be there and sharing their experience that they had with the unfortunate situation that brought them into being a victim. And we talk about victims generally in the abstract, but I can assure you that victims and survivors are real, and they need options and services. That was part of our particular theme this year. I was just glancing at some of the news information in our local area, and this is not our city, so don't get alarmed at all, but in one of the neighboring cities, headline that happened less than 16 hours ago, a man who admitted to killing two men in August 2019 was granted a conditional release. Darrell Cheney, Jr., 42, is out on what's called conditional release, according to officials at a neighboring circuit court. In 2019, Cheney was arrested in connection with a double homicide at a former Dunn's River Jamaican Caribbean restaurant. Persons identified as the victims in that particular case was a 55-year-old man named Aki Arad Abdul Hak Marad, and a 62-year-old person named Barrington Anthony Brown. I bring that up because family members who are survivors of that unfortunate event, they had the following to say in the article, "Our family needs to be heard," said the sister of Mr. Marad, indicated Mr. Marad was a good person, a good man, a family man, a father, was a God-fearing, and he was a beacon of light, so on, so on, so forth. Even wrote a letter to the actual news organization about the family's wishes in terms of being survivors of that event. That's just a small piece of the whole when it comes to victims and survivors. It certainly drives home the question posed in this year's theme of how would you help survivors of such a situation? Now, I could go on and on, but I was informed by one of my coworkers that I needed to be briefed because when I start talking, I never stop, but I'm going to thank you all again for treating Crime Victims Rights Week with dignity through the approval of the proclamation that was just read. I'm also going to turn it over, if you all would be patient and allow it, to our Victim Witness Director, Ms. Gardner. She had a few comments on the occasion.
Good evening. Every year, National Crime Victims Rights Week has a theme, as Mr. Bree Love shared. This year's theme is How Would You Help? Options, Services, and Hope for Crime Survivors. This theme asks all of us, friends, family members, neighbors, colleagues, community leaders, victim service providers, criminal justice practitioners, and health professionals, how can we help crime victims? What would you do if a friend or a loved one confided in you about their victimization? Are you familiar with the resources in our community? This year's theme is a call to action for all of us to create safe environments for crime victims, to share what's happened to them, and for them to know that they will be met with dignity, respect, and compassion. The Suffolk Victim Witness Program, located at the Commonwealth Attorney's Office, is funded by a federal grant called the Victims of Crime Act, also known as VOCA. Having passed through Congress in 1984, this is the 40th anniversary of VOCA. However, over the last several years, there have been continued cuts to this funding for victim witness programs across our country. These funding cuts compromise the efficacy of programs and compromise victim safety. We are incredibly fortunate here that the City of Suffolk recognizes the significance of having a victim witness program to meet those needs of its community members who've been impacted by crime, and to guide them through the complicated process that is the criminal justice system. The Suffolk Victim Witness Program has been committed to providing exceptional service and assistance to victims of crime for nearly four decades. I feel so blessed to work for a city that values the significance of what having a victim witness program can do for a city. It is with that compassion for crime victims that we're committed to creating a safer community. So again, I ask you all, how would you help a crime survivor? Thank you.
and adoption of the entire agenda as presented. Removal of any item from the consent agenda would only be necessary if any member of City Council wished to vote on a specific item separately, and a motion would be required. Questions and requests for information on specific agenda items can be addressed during the consideration of the consent agenda after the agenda speakers. Councilman Rector?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that, excuse me, Consent Agenda Item Number 10 in ordinance establishing the downtown advisory committee be pulled from the consent agenda and added after Item 18 under ordinances?
Okay. And in addition, I believe the city manager has information regarding public hearing item number 15?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. In regards to Item 15, staff is in receipt of a written request from the applicant to withdraw Item 15, conditional use permit 2024-001. The following are the specifics. Item 15 is a public hearing to consider an ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish surface mining operations, burl pits, on properties located at 6501 and 6701 Holy Neck Road, zoning map 49, parcel 58 star 12, and 58 star 12B. Account numbers 154000652 and 154000705. Conditional use permit 2024-001. At this time, I would ask council's consideration of a motion to remove Item 15 from this evening's agenda, as the applicant has withdrawn his application for further consideration.
Councilman Rector, would you consider amending your motion to remove Consent Agenda Item Number 10 for a separate vote under ordinances while removing public hearing Item Number 15 from the agenda entirely, and to adopt the remainder of the agenda as presented?
Yes, I will make that my motion.
So moved. We have a second. Councilman Fawcett?
I move to second his motion.
A second from Councilman Fawcett. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Madam Clerk, do we have any agenda speakers, and if so, explain the guideline?
We have no agenda speakers this evening.
That being said, will you please present the items for consideration?
Consent Agenda Item Number 7, an ordinance to accept and appropriate additional funds from the Virginia Department of Transportation State of Good Repair Program, and to transfer local urban maintenance funds for repaving Freedom Mill Road over Spivey Swamp. Consent Agenda Item Number 8, an ordinance to accept and appropriate funds from the Western Tidewater Community Services Board for the Suffolk Department of Fire and Rescue. And Consent Agenda Item Number 9, an ordinance to accept, excuse me, to appropriate and transfer automated traffic enforcement camera program funds from the Road Maintenance Fund to the General Fund for Community Safety Improvement.
Mr. Manager, would you please provide an overview of the items?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, in regards to Item 7, the city has received $434,755 in additional funds from the Virginia Department of Transportation State of Good Repair Program for the repaving Freeman Mill Road at the Spivey Swamp Crossing. The additional funding requires a local match of $729,441, which is available in FY2324 Road Maintenance Fund budget. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the revenues and expenditures of the FY2324 Capital Projects budget by the $434,755, and authorize the transfer of the $729,441 from the Roadway Maintenance Fund to the Capital Projects Fund budget. In regards to Item 8, the city has received $34,637.56 from the Western Tidewater Community Service Board for its partnership with the Department of Fire and Rescue to implement the Community Paramedic Program. The funding will be used for the purchase of computer hardware and software necessary for patient record keeping. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the planned revenues and expenditures of the General Fund Suffolk Department of Fire and Rescue operating budget by the $34,637.56. There is no local match required. In regards to Item 9, it is an ordinance to appropriate and transfer automatic traffic enforcement camera funds in the amount of $791,416 from the Road Maintenance Fund to the General Fund for Community Safety Improvements, and the improvements are listed in the ordinance for you. Adoption of the ordinance will provide for the transfer of expenditures of the $791,416 automated traffic enforcement camera program funds from the FY2324 Road Maintenance Fund to the General Fund for expenditures of the identified community safety projects.
Okay, thank you, Mr. M- Okay, thank you, Mr. Manager. If there are no questions about the items, a motion would be in order to approve the Consent Agenda as presented. Councilman Fawcett?
Move to approve as presented.
And a motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett. Councilman Johnson?
Second.
Second from Councilman Johnson. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, Councilmembers prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We now move to public hearings. Our first public hearing is to receive public comment on the proposed operating and capital budget for fiscal year 2024, 2025, and related ordinances. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. As you recall at your April 3 work session, the Director of Finance, Charles Meek, presented the City Manager's proposed FY2425 operating and capital budget. At the end of the presentation, Council by motion provided direction to include a two-cent real estate tax reduction. Prior to tonight's public hearing, Mr. Meek will provide a brief overview of the proposed budget highlights, including the requested amendment. Charles?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. I'm going to provide a brief overview of the proposed operating capital budget prior to the public hearing. This year's proposed budget, our priorities are to maintain service levels in our growing city with no tax rate increase, provide for critical personnel needs and employee compensation, address community health and safety, public education, quality of life through capital improvements, and financial policy compliance to maintain our AAA status. The proposed fiscal year '25 budget totals $882,10325 across all 17 funds. Looking at the priorities, maintaining service levels with no tax rate increase, the proposed budget that was presented to you on April 3 included maintaining the real estate rate at $1.09 citywide, 10 and 1/2 cents in the downtown business taxing district, and 24 cents in the Route 17 taxing district, maintaining our standing at third lowest real estate tax rate in the region. At your last council meeting, Council directed, adopted a motion and directed the City Manager to reduce the citywide real estate tax rate by 2 cents in the FY25 budget from $1.09 to $1.07 per $100 of assessed value. It has a $3.2 million impact. A few slides from now, I'm going to provide you with information on how we recommend addressing the reduction. The proposed budget also provides for the critical personnel needs and employee compensation of the city. Forty-four new full-time positions are proposed to address city growth and service demand, 38 in the General Fund and six in other funds, which would maintain our employees per 1,000 citizens at 15.6, which is slightly higher, about a half a position per 1,000 residents more than fiscal year '15, so 10 years ago. We also, in the proposed budget, we want to remain competitive in the region with our ability to attract and retain employees. So the proposed budget includes a 4% cost of living adjustment for full-time, part-time, and grand employees, a 2% retention incentive for sworn police personnel. Now, this is a modification from what we proposed at your April 3 meeting, which is a step increase for sworn police personnel. We've also proposed step plan adjustments for qualifying employees in line in conjunction with the adopted compensation plan in April 2022. So those employees that are meeting their milestones in terms of years of service and do a step next year would receive that, and that's accounted for in the proposed budget. Proposed budget also includes market adjustments, regrades, and reclassifications for certain positions that were deemed below market average in the region or where their job duties have changed or increased as well. And then lastly, constitutional officers, registrar, council appointees, deputy city managers, deputy city attorney, and department directors will receive or propose to receive market adjustments in lieu of the 4% cost of living adjustment. We also want to address community health and safety, and we've done that with what is proposed to increase staffing in the police, fire and rescue, sheriff, and emergency communications departments and divisions. We've provided additional funding to invest in local service partners that provide services to citizens with most critical deeds in our community at $274,000 increase. It's a host of organizations that we're recommending funding for. And in addition to that, we've provided funding in the proposed budget for emergency shelter operations once that facility is renovated and ready to move forward. In public education, we fully funded the Suffolk Public Schools operating budget and capital budget request. $75.3 million is proposed for school operations. That's a $4 million increase over the previous year, as well as carried forward additional $2 million approved by Council mid-year in the current fiscal year for school security and safety. The school's capital budget includes $28.6 million for the JFK Middle School replacement and the Northern Shores Elementary addition, which are in the approved CIP. $11.5 million is addressed for schools debt service next year. That's a slight $400,000 decrease over the current year, expecting that to ramp back up over the next few years as the bond funds for the JFK Middle School come online. Then we've also provided $739,702 for the school administration and operations building leases, which are increasing by $296,000 due to additional space being leased for schools. The proposed budget includes quality of life enhancements through capital improvements. All of the projects that were approved in the first year of the CIP, $83.5 million across this full spectrum of service areas are accounted for in the proposed budget. So all the projects from parks and recreation, city buildings and facilities, public safety, transportation, the schools' projects, village neighborhoods, open space and downtown projects, stormwater drainage, and water and sewer upgrades, those projects that were in the first year of the CIP are funded in the proposed budget. Looking at our financial policies, compliance, and maintaining our AAA status, we are in great shape here with what is proposed in the budget next year. Our capital pay-go is projected to increase to 11.5%. Debt as a percentage of assessed value is decreasing to 1.4%. Debt as a percentage of general government expenditures decreasing to 6.2%. And then our unassigned fund balance, we maintain our 20% base level, our 2.5% in the stabilization fund, and then the capital reserve fund with what is projected in terms of surplus in the current year would increase to $50.9 million. Proposed amendments, with the proposed two, or the adopted two-cent real estate reduction that the Council has directed, has a $3.2 million impact on general fund revenue. So we're proposing to reduce the general fund transfer to the capital projects fund by $3.2 million. If you recall, in the proposed budget that we rolled out on April 3, we included $8 million in the capital fund for capital contingency. This would reduce that to $4.8 million. The next steps would be to hold the public hearing tonight, receive citizen and stakeholder comments, direct staff on any additional amendments, and then we move forward to May 1. We'll have the public hearing on the effective rate increase due to the reassessment values increasing more than 1%, and then hopefully recommended adoption at the May 1 meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meeks. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, will you please explain the timing system?
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address, and will receive three minutes to offer their comments.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address?
My address is 5028 Hunt Club Chase, Suffolk, Virginia 23435. Mr. Mayor Doeman, Vice Mayor Ward, Mr. City Manager, City Council. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the resilient and dedicated professionals of the city's Public Works Department. And I ask you guys to stand real while I'm speaking, please. Two years ago, we stood before you asking that we not be left out of the compensation increase that was being planned, and you heard our cry. And we thank you for hearing our cry. Today, there's a 4% increase proposed in the upcoming budget. We're here as a team, first of all, again, to say thank you for the increases that you've given us up to this date. It shows that you care about us as employees of the city and makes us proud to be employees of the City of Suffolk. In addition, it keeps us competitive with other municipalities. As employees, when we begin to network with employees from surrounding municipalities, we find that not only are we competitive where salaries are concerned, but currently we are able to share with them the attraction in working for the City of Suffolk. As it has been said on numerous occasions, Public Works touches every individual in the City of Suffolk at least once every week of every year, and that's when we remove the refuse from every house in the city. However, in addition to removing the refuse, we keep our roads safe and in good repair with milling and paving and pothole repair. We keep water flowing with our ditch maintenance. We keep grass mowed throughout the city. We keep you safe with our ever-evolving traffic signal maintenance. We keep travelers safe with the upkeep of our pavement markings and our signs. In addition, we make sure pedestrians are safe with our sidewalk maintenance and repair. We also trap and test mosquitoes and provide the best public transportation and handling roads. While this is not an all-encompassing list of tasks and attributes of the City of Public Works teams, it is a snippet of what we provide to the citizens of Suffolk. And it is to let you know that investing in us as employees is more than a good investment. It is a demonstration to anyone who would choose to see that not only is Suffolk a dynamic place to live, to play, and visit, but Suffolk is an amazing place to be employed, as you consider this 4% increase, not just for the employees of Public Works, but for the many employees of the multiple departments of the City of Suffolk, and that we make the city the thriving and prosperous community that it is and it is becoming. We ask that you remember the things just listed. Again, we recognize the work that you do as City Council. We understand the weight of the decisions that you have to make. We realize that you are under constant scrutiny, and we know that you put your hearts into the decisions that you make, and for that, we say thank you. In closing, in Public Works, we have a motto that we share amongst each other and to the citizens when they call us with what may seem like an overburdening problem. We put their minds at ease with three simple words: We got this. And we want to leave you with those words tonight. You don't have to worry because we got this. When your constituents are constantly making Public Works requests, we got this. When the skies get gray and the roads become almost impassable, we got this. When potholes are being reported and citizens become irate, we got this. We only ask that when the 4% raise comes before you, that you echo those same sentiments to us: We got this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We have our next speaker, please.
Good evening. I'm Steve Zolos. I'm the Chief Executive Officer with Senior Services of Southeastern Virginia. Our offices are actually at 2551 Eltham Avenue in Norfolk, Virginia. And I'm here to talk on behalf of the older adults here in the City of Suffolk. With our current funding, we're unable to meet the growing needs of seniors here in the city. Our current funding, including dollars provided by the City of Suffolk simply at the East Suffolk Rec Center, we're able to provide meals to 35 individuals at that center. Unfortunately, there are 41 people on the waiting list. This means that some folks who attend are able to receive meals and others are not. This is unacceptable. These meals are not just extra, an extra part of the program. These meals are essential to the folks who attend there. They're sometimes their main, if not their only, meal of the day. And these are not bags of vegetables, they're not cans of beans that we hand out. These are, and cannot be found at the local food pantry and things like that. These are fully prepared, nutritionally balanced, hand-delivered meals that are served that very day. Unfortunately, we're seeing this trend across all of our jurisdictions that we serve, where our services are being overrun by the demand. This should be especially significant for the City of Suffolk because you have the fastest-growing senior population of all Southampton Roads and Western Tidewater at 33% growth rate through the year 2030. We are quickly reaching a crisis situation when it comes to supporting our older adults, and we need to work together and promote fresh thinking in order to avert this situation. As a first step, I'm asking you to consider fully funding the requested $70,667 this year. Last year, we certainly appreciate your support of $50,000. The additional $20,000 will allow us to feed 16 more individuals at the East Suffolk Senior Center for a full year. This doesn't fully alleviate the problem. It doesn't even touch the waiting list for our iRide transportation programs for older adults, our benefits counseling that we have to cut off when open enrollment starts, but it at least starts to serve the need specifically at the East Suffolk Rec Center. If City Council would like to completely eliminate the waiting list at the East Suffolk Rec Center, the FY25 funding would need to be $103,238 for fiscal year '25. So I respectfully ask that you fully fund the request that we've made for $70,667,000 this year. It will certainly help the older adults here in the City of Suffolk. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Your next speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, Members of Council, good evening. My name's Jim Granfield. I'm the public defender here in Suffolk, 610 West Constance Road. I must be crazy following the first speaker, the gentleman from Public Works. If he decides he's tired of working much harder than I do, talk to me afterwards. He'd make a great public defender. Our sign out front says, "Office of the Public Defender." At the bottom, it says, "Home of the Sixth Amendment." I'm happy to report, the Sixth Amendment is alive and well in the City of Suffolk. I speak tonight in support of and to say thank you- the city of Suffolk. I speak tonight in support of and to say thank you for page 130, line item 55687, wherein you supplement the Office of the Public Defender. A year ago, I stood before you when I asked for a supplement, and I told you I hope to be back in a year, and here I am, to tell you what impact that money had. We're at full staffing for the first time in about three and a half years. We were running around with six lawyers when we were supposed to have eight. We finally made it to eight. I was able to hire a lawyer with 20 years' experience in private practice, as well as another lawyer who had experience in both another PD office and the Attorney General's office. I don't get to make those hires without the supplement. Our experience level is strong. In the past year, we've had two drug court graduations. The Behavioral Health Docket is up and running in General District Court. Western Tidewater Regional Jail, Chris Smith, the superintendent, has hired a full-time reentry coordinator, who, working with my office, we hope to reduce recidivism by assisting people coming out of custody, secure housing, and employment. Every person who does not come back to my office becomes a taxpayer and not a tax taker. They say if you want to know someone's priorities, look at their calendar and their checkbook. I know many of you took the time to meet with me and one from my staff over the course of the last year, and once again, you've included us in your proposed budget. We're proud this year to be listed under what is called Local Organization Partnerships, and that word I really appreciate. Thank you.
Thank you. We have our next speaker, please. Do we have anyone else who would like to speak? Here we go.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members. My name is David Green of 315 Beaman's Mill Trail. I'm here tonight as the President of the Suffolk Chapter of the Southern States Police Benevolent Association. As an organization, we represent the interests of sworn and civilian personnel working in the Suffolk Police Department. I'm here tonight to voice support for the proposed budget and commit City Council and the mayor's office on the positive work that has been done to improve recruitment and retention efforts for the department. We all stand behind the positive quality of life changes that have been happening in the city and look forward to a bright future for the department and the city of Suffolk. Your efforts, the efforts of our interim chief and command staff have not gone unnoticed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of City Council and Staff. My name is Jessica York, and I am the newly-appointed Director of Development for Western Tidewater Free Clinic. Eight days in, I am very honored and proud to have joined this group of amazing community servants. The city of Suffolk is vital to the completion of our mission to provide high-quality healthcare services to the underinsured and underserved in the city of Suffolk. The city of Suffolk has invested in the clinic since its beginning in 2007, and we are extremely grateful for their support. Your current investment in the '23-'24 fiscal year will help us cover the cost of care for more than 170 Suffolk residents through more than 1,500 visits. 59% of our patients are from Suffolk. In the fiscal year '22-'23, we served 879 city residents through over 6,000 visits. 389 of those patients were dental patients through over 1,100 patient visits. Including in those visits were two City of Suffolk employees and three City of Suffolk Public School employees, which I'm proud to say. Since the opening of our doors, the clinic has provided more than 7,400 duplicating patients have been treated with medical, dental, and mental health services. We have received more than 300,000 free medications with the retail cost of over $58 million. We continue to see a growing need in our dental services as well as mental health. To meet the need, we have added two additional mental health workers, and we have expanded our dental health clinic to two chairs to four. The dental expansion has allowed us to provide as much as 36% more patients in this fiscal year. We already have seen a 9% increase in patients served at the opening of our dental suite in January. Your support of us is critical. We want to continue to thank you for the support, and thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Christopher Dove, 852 Colonel Mead Drive, Suffolk, Virginia, 23434. As you know, I don't work for the city like most of these other people. I'm one of the people that pay the bills. One of the concerns I have is that our capital improvements plan seems to be wanting. Last week, I was aghast to hear the city manager and the city mayor say that we don't need nor schools because the school capacity hasn't changed in years. If you look at schools such as King's Fork Elementary, I mean, not sorry, King's Fork Elementary, Elephants Fork Elementary, and Kilby Shores Elementary, you see overcrowded schools. These schools are overcrowded directly from the way this council has decided how to do capital improvements, specifically not do the improvements that need to be done. Elephants Fork and Kilby Shores have been on the capital improvements plan for decades. The reason they look the way they do is because no one has funded the changes that we've suggested, but you keep pushing off to the right. Right now, we have an overcrowding of schools primarily because in 2018, you removed mobile units from counting as capacity, which was a wonderful thing, except for you never increased the capacity of the schools since then. So the school, well, relatively. So now we have a situation where our middle schools are in great shape, although one of them is old, and you are financing changing it. But the other middle schools are below capacity. Excellent job. However, the elementary schools are all over capacity except for Booker T. Washington. The high schools, two of the three high schools are over capacity, and there's no plans to go ahead and add new schools where the capacity is wanting. You need to go ahead and seriously look about long-term funding of the public schools so that we are meeting the requirements of the Uniform Development Ordinance and not just ignoring them. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members, and other city officials. My name is Marleesa Montgomery. I'm the Executive Director for the Geneva Shelter, and I would like to thank you for allowing us to be considered in the budget for 2024 and '25. We greatly appreciate all the support and financial assistance that we receive as a domestic violence sexual assault program. Tonight, I stand before the mayor and vice mayor and council members, asking for an additional help for the Geneva Shelter. We would like to ask for the modification to the Moratorium Ordinance Number 13-0-078, which stopped nonprofit agencies from being tax exempt. We have five properties in the city of Suffolk, and we have been serving victims of domestic violence and survivors for over 35 years. And currently, we are in the process of building, which is already built, a second, I'm sorry, building, it's already built, a additional four-bedroom house to our program, which would increase our capacity from 32 beds to 52 beds. Last year, in the city of Suffolk, we served 8,869 nights of emergency shelters to victims and survivors from the city of Suffolk. We also provided direct services to 718 victims in the city of Suffolk. The funds from our asking to be exempt as a tax-exempt program as a nonprofit organization would allow us to put that funding into our new house, which is the Nora Butler Safe House that's going to open July 1st, 2024. And so we're asking if there could be a change and allow us to waive paying property taxes for our six, well, it will be six properties, but five properties that we currently have and we're currently paying taxes on. And that changed in 2013. So we would like to be considered as a nonprofit tax-exempt program if that change could take place, and that would help us with our funding of our new shelter in the city of Suffolk. Thank you very much for your time and your continued support.
Do we have anyone else present who would like to speak? Is there anyone else present who would like to speak in regards to this ordinance? Hearing none, this public hearing is closed. Counsel, there's not any action that needs to be taken tonight, but I will open it up for questions or comments. Do we have any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. I've just got a few comments. First, just general overview of the budget. We've dedicated 57% of the budget to public safety and education, 30% to public safety, 27% to education. The estimates in several areas are very conservative. I appreciate the staff putting together the proposal that they have with city manager. Our fiscal policies, four fiscal policies we have in place to provide a reasonable guarantee that we will maintain our AAA bond rating, or not only within the guidelines, but in every single category, we have improved upon them. I mean, other than the unassigned fund balance being at 20%, that's maxed out at 20%, but our Pago, which is the money that we spend for projects rather than borrow funds for it, has a 3% guideline. We're at 11.5%. That's almost four times, which saves our citizens on debt service as well. Debt is a percentage of value, maxed out at four, is only at 1.4. Debt is a percentage of government expenses, is supposed to be maxed out at 10%, it's 6.2. The manager has adjusted some salaries and wages for key personnel based on some market studies that were done over the last several months. I don't have a particular problem with that. There may be some more information that counsel would like to get, you know, later on between now and the actual time of budget approval. We've amended our budget priorities, 4% cost of living adjustment across the board, and we have also implemented an additional 2%. It says retention incentive, but that is a permanent increase to that pay scale from 4% to 6%. So that'll stay there. In regards to constitution officers, registered council appointees, as of this time, there's no action being taken from council, so I'm sure that's taken into consideration within the budget, that those funds will be available. We hope to have that ready to give to you next month. I like where the additional staffing is coming from. A lot of it is in public safety. The police department is the largest beneficiary of the additional positions. We've got an additional 15 in that department, seven administrative officers, six emergency operators, two animal shelter. So that's an excellent source of the funds that we are fortunate enough to have. We do need to keep in mind that these are reoccurring funds also. So whether we can do anything like this again next year is going to, you know, remains to be seen. But I appreciate your efforts there in keeping us competitive, and I believe our Public Works Department said it all when they said we want to be the place where other folks want to come to work, not only as far as compensation is concerned, but the work environment as well. And from what I can see in regards to our work environment, everywhere I go, it appears that our personnel, the morale is high, and everybody enjoys their job. And when people enjoy their job, it becomes more than a job, and the results are much better than if it's not exactly the case. So with that being said, let's see what else we got here. 4% charity fund down a little bit. Okay, that's it for me in the comments, and we will be coming back. I know the council continues to review the budget. We appreciate you making the amended changes that we have suggested in regards to reducing the real estate tax rate from 109 to 107. With that, we'll move to our next public hearing, which is a resolution to adopt the Fiscal Year 2024-2025 Annual Action Plan for the City of Suffolk's Community Development Block Grant Program, also known as CDBG, and the Western Tidewater Home Consortium Home Investment Partnership Grant Program, HOME. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. At this time, Kevin Wine will come to the podium to give the staff report. Kevin?
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, I provided a brief on this item at your last meeting, so I'll be brief this evening. But we do adopt an annual action plan annually as it relates to our funding mechanisms through HUD for our CDBG, that's our Community Development Block Grant Program, and our Home Investment Partnership Grant Program that we administer for both the city and the Western Tidewater area, including Franklin, Southampton, Isle of Wight, and the city. Similar to our CIP, it's a one-year funding horizon, and we coordinate it at this time of year, obviously, with the adoption of the budget and the capital improvement plan. So I've noted that these, both programs, the CDBG and the Home Investment Partnership Program, these are to benefit low-to-moderate income persons. CDBG has a much broader spectrum of flexibility as it relates to what we can utilize it for on the city level. The Home Investment Partnership, really, the purpose of that is to get persons of low to moderate income in quality, safe housing. So what do these funds look like in the annual action plan as outlined? For the CDBG program, the fiscal year 2024-2025 allocation is $496,361. On the Home Investment Partnership side, it is $426,831. For CDBG, this is what it looks like as far as an outline of the program. A good portion of that goes to administration, but we work very closely with our friends at Suffolk Redevelopment and Housing Authority on emergency home repair, and $50,000 of it is allocated for that. We are in a good position to provide some funding for a low-income housing multifamily complex here in the city to the tune of $285,000. And then we work with our partners annually, in which there's a 15% cap, one of those being the Western Tidewater Free Clinic for Kids and the Geneva Shelter. As it relates to home, this is the breakdown. Just south of $25,000 is the administration cost, as we are the lead agency. The member activities account for the bulk of that, $325,000. And then we work with Habitat for Humanity, who is our community housing development organization. They get just south of $77,000. So we provided an overview of that information at your last meeting, and this would be the public hearing tonight on this item, as we work towards anticipation of adoption at your May 1st meeting. And then we would submit this annual action plan to HUD for their approval in June. So that concludes my overview on this item. I'll be happy to stand by for any questions at the conclusion of the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Wine. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, will you please explain the timing system? system?
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address, and will receive three minutes to offer their comment.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address? Do we have anyone who would like to speak to this resolution? Hearing none, public hearing is now closed. There's no action necessary tonight regarding this item. Does counsel have any questions or comments at this time? Hearing none, we'll move to our next public hearing, which is an ordinance to rezone and amend the official zoning map of the city of Suffolk to change the zoning from CP, Commerce Park, OI, Office Institutional, and RU, Residential Urban Zoning District Conditional, to RC, Residential Compact Zoning District Conditional, for property locating at zoning map 34, parcel 3C, asterisk 5, asterisk 6, account number 252853000. This is RZN 2023-5 Conditional. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mr. Wine will present the staff report on this item also.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Once again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. As stated, this is a request to rezone the property, one single parcel from CP, that's our Commerce Park zoning district. Also a portion of it is zoned RU, Residential Urban, and ONI, Office Institutional Zoning District, to RC, Residential Compact Conditional Zoning District, for the purpose of developing a single-family attached townhome development on the parcel. The property is located within the Central Growth Area, and it is designated Inner Ring Suburban Use District within the 2035 Comprehensive Plan. The subject property is located on the northern side of Pitch Kettle Road, next to the Route 58 interchange. To the north of the parcel are fields and forested lands, those are zoned RR, that's our Rural Residential, and C, Conservation Zoning Districts. To the south is the West Haven Lake subdivision, consisting of single-family detached homes zoned RL, it's Residential Low Density, and the Foxfield Meadows subdivision, consisting of single-family detached homes zoned RLM, and RU, that's our Residential Urban Zoning District. To the east is the Preserve at Lake Mead subdivision, consisting of single-family detached homes zoned RR, that is our Rural Residential Zoning District. And to the west of the property is the Route 58 bypass. And here on the right-hand side of the screen, you can see where those zoning districts intersect. You see the CP there, closest to the Route 58 bypass, and ONI Square there, at the front on Pitch Kettle Road, and then the balance of the property is the RU zoning district. This property does have some history. Previously, a portion of it was rezoned in 2007 from Commerce Park to RU and ONI. The rezoning proposed 179 age-restricted townhome units and a minimum of 20,000 square feet of commercial space on the site. Those 179 age-restricted townhomes would have resulted in a density on the property of five units per acre. The applicant, in this case, is proposing to rezone the entire site to include those commercial zoning districts as well. And the property constitutes 63 acres in, in size in total, and the CP, ONI, and RU Conditional zoning designations are proposed for RC, that's our Residential Compact Zoning District, as the applicant envisions constructing 335 townhomes on the site. Here you have a conceptual layout, as in, as conceptualized by the applicant depicting these units. With the proximity to Lake Mead, there are some wetlands features on the property, as noted in staff's report, primarily on the northern portion of the parcel. There's some on the western side as well. These extend towards the eastern side of the parcel. In total, approximately 4.6 acres of the site constitutes wetlands, and this does have an impact on the overall density yield on the property. Once you subtract that out, the developable acreage of this parcel is 58 acres. Therefore, the proposed net density for this development, should be approved at 335 units, would result in a density of 5.7 units per acre. So relatively modest increase over the existing RU parcel now. Access to the site would be taken from two separate points, one on Pitch Kettle Road at its intersection with Foxfield Parkway, and the other from a right-of-way platted and stubbed from the Preserve at Lake Mead community to the property's east. The access would be via Preserve Way. So proffers, as it relates, this is a conditional rezoning. You do have a revised proffer statement at your dais this evening. The developer is proffering 10 items in total. I will touch on the, the two changes to the, the document that you have in front of you as it relates to what was presented in staff's report. But the proffers, in this case, include cash contributions to advanced capacity at the elementary school and the high school levels to the tune of 5.85 million dollars. A proffer to limit the overall development to no more than 335 townhome units. A minimum square footage for each of the units being 1,700 square feet or greater. Exterior elevations, as well as a variety of design requirements. Improvements as outlined within the reviewed and accepted traffic impact assessment, as well as $100,000 towards the city's Route 58 bypass Pitch Kettle Road interchange project that is contained within the capital improvements plan. Amenities to include a clubhouse and pool, enhanced community entrance features, and a phasing mechanism. So as it relates to the changes, the first being schools, and I'll touch on that in the next slide, the second being phasing. Within your included, within the proffer statement that you have before you this evening, the developer is including a phasing schedule for this development. Specifically, what that means is the proffer would restrict the amount of units that could be built and receive certificates of occupancy on an annual basis. The first being no more than six certificates of occupancy prior to December 31st, 2026. The following year, that would increase to 10 a month, and that would be phased out on January 1st, 2028. After that time, there would be no cap month over month, but that would limit the issuance of residential COs to no more than 175 prior to that January 1st, 2028 date. It's important to note that this does exclude up to seven model homes that could be constructed during this time, and it would not prevent them from seeking COs for amenities such as the pool and clubhouse, or any other non-residential buildings that would be constructed in association with this development. So as it relates to the school change, I'll outline this for you. The project is currently zoned for Elephants Fork Elementary, Kings Fork Middle, and Kings Fork High School. Late last week, after the agenda was distributed to you all, it came to staff's attention that adequate capacity does in fact exist at Kings Fork Middle School to absorb the 34 students that would be generated per the UDO by this development. As such, the, just north of $1 million proffer that has been volunteered by the applicant to advanced capacity at the middle school level was not needed, and we would not be in a position to accept that. As such, the middle school proffer is not needed, and the applicant instead is proffering an additional 1.05 million, previously earmarked for the middle school capacity, to instead be utilized at the elementary school level, which in this case is the Elephants Fork CIP project. The total provided towards the project remains the same. They've just taken it reference to the middle school and have shifted it to the elementary school level. Here is an exhibit provided in support of the application and proffered by the applicant. So in staff's evaluation of this application, and in review of the principles and guidance contained within the 2035 Comprehensive Plan, as well as the regulations contained within the Unified Development Ordinance, we found the following. The Inner Ring Suburban Use District recommends 6 to 12 units per acre of residential density. The 5.7 units per acre that would be generated by this request does fall short of this range, however, is largely compatible with the surrounding established land uses. A large portion of the property in its current zoning would allow for commercial and/or other non-residential uses that would not be as compatible with the surrounding established land uses as the residential development as proposed. The portion of Pitch Kettle has been developed with low to moderate density residential, and any commercial development on this site would potentially conflict with these land uses, patterns that exist along the corridor. Additionally, the applicant is proffering contributions to impacted public facilities and making necessary improvements to the transportation network to align with the Unified Development Ordinance. As such, staff is recommending approval of this conditional rezoning with the proffers as presented. At last month's Planning Commission meeting on March 19th, there was a motion made recommending approval of this item. That did fail by a vote of 2 to 6. Therefore, this item is being presented for city council consideration this evening with the recommendation of denial by the Planning Commission. That concludes my report on this item. I'll be happy to stand by for any questions at the conclusion of the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Wine. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, will you please explain the timing system?
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address. We will have a 10-minute period for the proponents, a 15-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five minutes for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address, and that is to speak in favor of this ordinance?
Good evening, Mayor Doeman, Vice Mayor Ward, members of city council, city staff. My name is Grady Palmer. My business address, 999 Waterside Drive in the city of Norfolk. It's a pleasure to be here tonight in front of you. I'm very pleased that this applicant and this project tonight. I am going to deposit into your basket a letter from Lakita Frazier, who is with Smart Grove Suffolk, who wrote a letter of support. Lakita wanted to be here tonight but was unable due to an illness. But I'll, I'll leave that in your basket. So this, this project, as Kevin did a great job explaining, and I'm going to, I'm going to actually hit a few points, and then I'm going to sit down, because there are, there are people here that I think you need to hear from, from the community, from the Preserve at, at Lake Mead. But, and it's interesting to me that tonight your budget was discussed, because this project, if, if approved, would be a fiscal asset for the community. And one of the things that we prepared and submitted to your city staff was a fiscal impact analysis, and that fiscal impact analysis indicates that this project, if approved at full, full buildout, would net a surplus of $1 million every year to the, to the city of Suffolk. In addition, substantial proffers have been made to help offset the cost of capital improvements to the schools, and we know the schools, the schools are, are an issue, and my client is willing to make a significant financial commitment to the schools in, in terms of expanding capacity at Elephants Fork, Elephants Fork Elementary School. Couple of changes to the proffers. One thing that I want to say that we didn't include, that we should have, we just ran out of time. In the event that, that this is something that is important to the city council and to the city staff, we, we would be open to putting fences around our BNP's if directed, and your staff were to review and approve that. Just wanted to make that, make you aware of that. And in closing remarks on this, I know one of the things that you feature, and you can see that through the middle of the property, there's a big Dominion easement, transmission easement that runs through the middle of the property. We have reached out to Dominion's contact, Timothy Henman on that, and so we have begun discussions on crossing that easement, which is pretty normal in these, in these situations to have crossings of Dominion's easements, and they, they have, they simply, simple criteria that you have to follow, but we have, we have done that. I do want to just say that the, while the change, when, when Kevin called me on Friday and said that the middle school proffer was something they couldn't accept now, we sort of huddled up together and decided that the commitment to the schools is, is so important that instead of just accepting the, the city's position that the staff, that the proffer is no longer warranted for the middle school, the, the applicant made the, the difficult decision to, not that it was that difficult, because schools are so important, but to make the decision, to make the commitment to instead offer that money for Elephants Fork expansion. And so with that, I'll stand by for, for any questions that you have. I do ask for your approval tonight of this really great project, right location, and it, and honestly, this project, in my opinion, would make a much better neighbor than what would come by right through the Commerce Park zoning and the, and the ONI zoning, and so I think you'll hear some of that from the residents of Lake Mead tonight. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please, to speak in favor.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Manager, members of the city council, my name is Christopher Bullock. I live at 3327 Mittenville Point Drive in the city of Suffolk. I'm the General Counsel of Boyd Homes. First, I have a letter here from Ms. Terry Fritz, who is a resident of the Preserve at Mead Lake, our soon-to-be neighbor, in support, and I will place it in the box for review. I'm here to tell you a little bit about Boyd Homes. Boyd Homes has been building homes in Hampton Roads in Richmond, Virginia for over 40 years. We are local, and we operate that way. When we build a home, the homeowner, generally speaking, ends up with our cell phone number, and we talk to them until they are perfectly happy in their house. We develop quality neighborhoods with resort-style amenities that add value to the communities they're in. Patriots Walk near Mac Ben Elementary is one recent example of the work we've done. We also have a number of communities in Henrico and Chesterfield, including one that, if you look at the elevations again, is, that is what we're building, that, we have built that, and it is a successful project in Chesterfield County. We are committed to the city of Suffolk and its success as a community. We have tendered proffers that evidence that dedication. We reached out to the community, and I'd like to think that we have been welcomed into their community, as evidenced by the support we have from several members of, that live in the Preserve at Lake Mead. We are seeking your approval tonight so that we can continue our relationship with the city of Suffolk. I'll be here for the duration if the council has any questions at all, and I appreciate your time.
Thanks, sir. Next speaker, please, to speak in favor.
I found four matches. Could you?
I don't know where that came from.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Marlin J. Pierce. I live in the Preserve at Lake Mead, 1041 Egret Lane. I'm in support of this building project, because when my husband and I, who are, we are both Navy veterans, decided to purchase a home, we decided to purchase a forever home in Suffolk. We had lived in Chesapeake 26 years, but Suffolk seemed to be very inviting, not only in regards to our home, but in regards to my employment with Suffolk Public Schools. Boyd Homes has been outstanding in making contact with the Preserve at Lake Mead, allowing us to ask questions and understand their building project, understand who our neighbors could and should be. We are requesting that you consider this building project, because we too want to have neighbors just like yourselves, who are looking for a forever home, who are looking for amenities that would make their families comfortable, a home that will provide safety and security, neighbors who are like ourselves. We are asking you to please consider this project. While we are a cohesive neighborhood, some of us don't quite agree on this decision, but I'd rather have a residential home built next to my home than a commercial building. So please, if you would, this company has come to us three different times in three different formats, allowing us to ask questions, allowing us to do our research as to whether this was a good building project. It is. We could never build the amount of schools to keep up with the amount of students we'll receive, because we don't know what family values are and the number of family receive because we don't know what family values are and the number of family members that each family would like to produce. So we're asking you to consider this project and give them final approval. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We get our next speaker to speak in favor of this ordinance. We've got about another three minutes and some change.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. I am Levanya Wilson Mitchell. This is my husband, Terrence Mitchell, and we live at 1014 Egret Lane in the preserves at Lake Mead. Terrence and I have served on multiple municipal councils, committees, and boards in our former county and township. We retired here to Suffolk, and we expect to be here until God calls us home. Terrence and I, the boards that we served on that are relevant for tonight, he was a member of the zoning board, and we have both been a member of the planning boards. We understand what is entailed when applicants come before these boards. It's a good thing when the community knows, understands, and supports the plan that the applicant has. Boyd Homes and their representatives have met with us, the homeowners of the Palm, and they've shared their vision. Terrence and I stand here tonight in support of them and building their 335 townhomes and welcoming our new neighbors. So we'd like to ask the council members to support them, and we ask Mr. Johnson specifically to support them. We thank you for your time and opportunity to speak this evening.
Thank you. Thank you. We have our next speaker, please. We have a little less than two minutes.
Good evening. My name is Tasha Williams, and I'm expressing my strong opposition for this new proposal of the construction of the 300 townhomes of Pitch Kettle Community for the following reasons.
Excuse me, Ms. Williams, did you say you were in the opposition?
Yes, I'm against.
And this is for proponents.
I'm sorry?
This, we're still in speakers in favor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's all my fault. Yeah, we got a shot. We're going to put another 10, 15 seconds up there and give them a shot. This is for proponents. We've got about close to two minutes left, and then we will have a rebuttal period.
Just need a second, y'all. You good?
Yeah. Good. All right. Good evening, all. My name is Lonnie Talia Faro. I live at 148 Preserve Way. I am a homeowner at the Lake Mead. When I was first approached about this project, I had my reservations, but after meeting with these great builders here, and after also doing my research, I have become in favor of this project. I think it's a very good project, and again, I agree with all my other neighbors that we feel that having this as opposed to a construction or trucks and all that coming through our neighborhood, we'd rather have this development. I met with the builders, and I was very impressed with their project presentation, so I have become supportive. I would respectfully urge the council to be in agreement and support, and also, I would like to extend an urge for Mr. Johnson to become in agreement with this project as well. Thank you.
I don't know. I don't know. It's a dance, you lead.
Okay.
We still have a minute 20, if anyone would like to speak in favor of this ordinance Hearing none, we'll now move to time for opposition. We'll have 15 minutes for those to speak in opposition, which will be followed by a five-minute rebuttal period from the proponents. So if there's anyone here to speak in opposition, this is your time.
Again, my name is Tasha Williams. Good evening. Did you, you need my address? No?
Yes, ma'am, we get your name and address.
219 Terrywood Drive, Suffolk, Virginia 23434. And I'm in opposition for the new proposed construction for the over 300 townhomes for the following reasons. Pitch Kettle Parkway has experienced a significant traffic congestion during the peak hours. In addition to such a large number of townhomes, this would exacerbate the problem. The increased traffic flow resulting from the additional residents and vehicles in the area would lead to longer commute times, excuse me, gridlock, safety hazards for the pedestrians and drivers alike. The proposed construction of a new community will result in overdevelopment of the area, leading to increased population density and strain of existing resources and infrastructures. Our city is already facing challenges with traffic congestion, overcrowded schools, and limited access to green spaces. Excuse me, I'm a little nervous, I'm sorry. Adding more residential units without adequate planning and construction for these issues would further exacerbate these problems. Furthermore, the infrastructure surrounding Pitch Kettle Parkway, including roads, intersections, and public transportation routes, is not equipped to handle the influx of residents that will accompany the construction of 300 townhomes. With significant improvements to the existing infrastructure, the proposed development would place an undue burden on the surrounding community and diminish the quality of the life, quality of life for the current residents. Excuse me. The proposed development would significantly alter the character and charm of the community. Noise pollution, increased traffic, higher demand for services would diminish the quality of life for the current residents. Additionally, the introduction of a large number of residents may strain the community resources and lead to a loss of community cohesion, cohesiveness. Considering these concerns, I respectfully request the city council to reject the proposal of construction of over 300 townhomes along Pitch Kettle Parkway. Instead, I encourage the council to focus on revitalizing existing neighborhoods, investing in infrastructure improvements, and promoting sustainable development practices that benefit the entire community. By doing so, we can ensure that our community remains a safe, vibrant, and livable environment for all residents now and in the future. Thank you for considering my perspective on the matter, and I trust that the council will make a decision that prioritizes the best interest of the city and the residents.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker to speak in opposition.
Christopher Dove, 852 Colonel Mead Drive, Suffolk, Virginia 2343. For, I live in West Haven Lakes across the way. As you know, from the emails I've sent you, that is unlawful to increase the student capacity requirements for a development unless there is a capital improvement plan. There is no capital improvement plan for King's Fork High School. So it is unlawful for the city to accept funds to increase the capacity. I'm surprised Mr. Wine didn't tell you that. You can find it in the UDO. You should have already seen it. Also, Elephants Fork Elementary is currently overcapacity, and there is no commencement date nor completion date. So it is unlawful for you to accept the funds until you have a completion date, with make sure that the impact of the development is concurrent with the impact of, on these facilities. So you have two reasons that it seems reasonable that they're going to give you funds to increase capacity, but right now it's unlawful because there is no date where you're going to actually build a school. Last week, Mayor Doeman said that unless that money's been put in the budget for that year, there's no telling when that school's going to be built. And that's true because Elephants Fork and Kilby Shores have been on the capital improvement plan for over 25 years, and nothing has been done to them. And now you're going to go ahead and approve 330 homes and on schools that are not going to be built anytime soon. And according to the UDO, that is prohibited and unlawful. And I ask my councilmen to obey the law. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. I'm Denise Merton. I live at 4041 Kingston Parkway, and I live near this proposed project. My concern here is about the density, and let me just say, I don't have any problem with density in and of itself. I happen to live in a condominium community, and we do have single-family homes, but we're so close together that my neighbor and I could reach out our windows and shake hands with one another nearly. So it's not that that I'm concerned about. I'm concerned about us looking a little further down the road as to what we're doing in that area. It is going to be very near Port 460, and although we keep saying that there will be no trucks allowed on Pitch Kettle Road, let's face it, even if we could keep them off of Pitch Kettle Road, how do you think the people driving cars are going to start going? They're going to take, they're going to take all the shortcuts they can find. So the only impact that I heard discussed by the planning staff tonight was on the schools. How is this going to impact the roads? How is it going to impact city services? Do we have adequate safety, police, fire, and so forth? So I would just ask, in making this decision, that you think about what we are already doing in that area and what this is going to add to the problems that we already know we're creating there. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and city council members. I just want to say first, I oppose the new plan to install 335 units right across from Foxfield Parkway. My address is 100 Cloverleaf Drive, and we didn't get the pleasure of speaking with anyone about this new plan, and we're literally across the street. So I find it ironic that one community get a sit-down three times, and we did not have that privilege. We have 125 units, individual units, in our subdivision, and in the short coming year, whatever, there's going to be additional 36 townhomes built right in front of our subdivision. You know, I know it's, everyone wants to come to Suffolk now. You're proud that someone, people want to come to Suffolk, but you have to think about the residents. I mean, we're going to be having so many problems driving out of our neighborhoods. It's going to be probably, if there's 335 homes, maybe 500 or more cars. I don't know, how many times are these cars going to be on the same road at the same time? Maybe, I don't know, 1,000, 2,000 additional cars all added to this Pitch Kettle Parkway? It is going to be a nightmare, and that's, you know, I lived in Deep Creek in Chesapeake. We moved from there because it was congested. We came to this rural area, not Harborview. We chose this area because Harborview is getting busy. Now, you just got to say no. Who lives off of Pitch Kettle Parkway? Anybody? Pitch Kettle Parkway? Any of the council members? Okay. Thank you.
Ma'am, excuse me, ma'am, ma'am. Excuse me, thank you for bringing your address, but can we get your name, please?
Oh, Gloria Spencer. I'm the president of the HOA.
Thank you, Ms. Spencer.
You're welcome.
Next speaker, please, to speak in opposition.
Good evening. My name is Robert Pouchet, 436 Terrywood, Suffolk. I'm in the Foxfield Meadows subdivision. Are we permitted to forward a question to the developer through you? No? Okay, thank you. That's helpful. Just a little, you know, I don't know all the orders, so bear with me.
You could bring it up if you want, and they would have the opportunity to address them in the rebuttal period if they chose to.
All right, thank you. My point was, I was interested to know if the traffic study took into the thought that we have more than Foxfield Meadows 128 homes. On Foxfield Parkway, besides those 128, we also have about three-quarters of the traffic of the West Haven Lakes development that Ryan is just in the process of finishing. There's approximately 40 homes there. About 30 of them use Foxfield Parkway. And I know this because I take my dog out for a walk, and I see them in the morning going out to work, coming out of the new development, Fox, West Haven Lakes, and they come up Terrywood to Foxfield Parkway. Same thing at night. Those people, keep in mind, used, Ryan had a model home in our development they used for sales, so that's the way they came in to see the houses. That's the way they came in to pick the property. That's the way they come to see the progress on their house. We are creatures of habit, so these people are doing this. Three-quarters, and it's perfectly, it's going to be your road as it's taken over, but three-quarters of them as well. So you have 128. I hope they took into mind the, let's say, 30 of the 40 homes for traffic on that, and Ms. Spencer mentioned the 35 or 36 townhomes that have been approved in the upper section there. It's already a little tough getting out at certain times there on Pitch Kettle, and this will obviously dump a lot more traffic in there. We just want to make sure you have considered all these facts. The other thing is, if this goes ahead, I looked on the plans, I didn't see anything about lighting on Pitch Kettle. That end of Pitch Kettle is dark. Mr. Wine is working with us to get a couple lights that were on our plan originally. He's helping out, and we appreciate that. That's the only thing we'd like you to keep this in mind. We don't want to make it a terrible place to live. We're happy. It's a nice area, but it is going to be some congestion to concern. All right? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please, to speak in opposition.
Good evening. I'm Scott Spencer, 100 Cloverleaf Drive, and I live in the Foxfield Meadows subdivision. The mere fact that this was not approved in a prior planning meeting should speak to some of the concerns that the residents have. So that in itself gives me a kind of question that we're kind of talking about this in another session. It's almost a question of revenue versus residence. So I'm just posing that to council. Thank you.
Our next speaker, please, to speak in opposition. We have about another four and a half minutes. Is anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? Hearing none, we'll move to our five-minute rebuttal period for the opponents.
Thank you, Mayor Doeman. So traffic is something that we studied very intently with this project. We actually did a comparison analysis, and I'm going to leave it here for you. I left it for the planning commission. But we compared the traffic that would, that could be produced under the current zoning, and particularly the Commerce Park zoning, the office and institutional zoning, and the residential urban zoning that's currently on the property that could be developed by right. No one would show up at a city council meeting or a planning commission meeting. It goes straight to a set of plans into your city staff and is administratively approved. So there's a lot of by-right development that could occur on the property, but we did study that because we wanted to know how we fit into that. So our traffic impact analysis concluded that, under the current zoning, 3,000 So our traffic impact analysis concluded that, under the current zoning, 3,769 daily trips would be produced, taking into account all the things that are permitted by right under the current zoning. Our project was evaluated and determined that it would produce 2,412 daily trips. So that's a significant reduction over what would happen or could happen by right. And I'll just say that the non-residential zoning, you've got, you've got some of it in this quadrant, you've got some on the southwest side of the interchange, much, much more significant Commerce Park zoning. But we've seen a lot of interest in Suffolk for warehousing, for light industry. And the Commerce Park is specifically designed to permit the development of what's called flex space. And I just wanted, and this is the thing that sort of alarmed me when I saw that, because I, you know, when I see existing zoning that's undeveloped, I mean, I do this every day, so I see it and I recognize the sort of ticking time bomb quality of that because somebody may see it as an opportunity and come in and develop by right. No one has, no one gets to say about that. But there is, I just want to give you a definition of flex space, just so you understand and the residents understand what they're dealing with on Pitch Kettle. Because if they're concerned about the traffic that would come off of this project, this project doesn't compare to the amount of traffic that would come off commercial, Commerce Park zoning on the northeast quadrant and the southwest quadrant of the interchange. But flex space is a building designed to accommodate a combination of office, retail, wholesale, warehousing, and light manufacturing functions. And we're seeing, we're seeing light manufacturing functions, we're seeing warehousing functions all along 58 and Pruden Boulevard. And that is a very real possibility. Yeah, I can't, I don't know the future, but the zoning is in place for a significant amount of traffic and, more importantly, truck traffic. And so approving this project would reduce the traffic generation in the zoning and would eliminate the potential for truck traffic on this property. So I'll leave this for you, and I'll stand by for any questions that you have. I do, again, ask for your approval tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We've got about another two minutes in rebuttal. If anybody else would like to speak.
Again, my name is Dr. Marlin J. Pierce. I live at 1041 Egret Lane. I just wanted our neighbors across the street to feel comfortable with how we met with Boy Construction. It was through our Property Management Association that it's all fit that we should have that connection. So I don't think that they omitted anyone. It was just set up by our PMA. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And we've got about a minute and a half left in rebuttal. May I listen to speak in favor of this? I knew you spoke in opposition last time. Thank you.
Okay, I'll see if you can.
This is a rebuttal period.
Yeah, let me just address the comments of Foxfield Meadows. So we did send letters to all of Foxfield Meadows. We couldn't find an active specifically contact information for them, so we sent out letters giving them information about the site plan and the proposal. And I did not get a response back from that. I did know the developer of the Preservate Lake Mead. He's a client of mine, so I, through that relationship, I contacted him and he got me into contact with the Preservate Lake Mead. But a lot of effort has been made to sort of reach out and let people know what's being proposed on the property.
Thank you. Have we got about a minute left in rebuttal? Is there anyone else who would like to speak during the rebuttal period? Hearing no additional speakers, this public is now closed. Counsel, questions, comments, or a motion? Don't all speak up at one time. Do we have any questions or comments? Councilman Johnson, and rightfully so.
I'll go, since you all know who I am. Thank you, folks, for letting my constituents know who I am, and I appreciate it. I represent this borough. I represent this, this, don't I? Pitch Kettle, yes, that's my, that's my borough. I do know that, guys. I'm just playing with you. First off, Robert, you knew I was going to call you up for a minute. I need, I got a question. What is, where do we stand on a stoplight on Pitch Kettle, right there where you enter Pitch Kettle?
At the on-ramps, off-ramps, the bypass. That was something that was considered a number of years ago, but as we have taken further look now, we've actually developed a different outcome and different idea of how to manage that interchange with some, one of the innovative intersections that VDOT now endorses. It's called a bowtie interchange. It actually does away with all traffic signals, so it's continuous flow traffic. And again, we think the capacity and/or the delay is much, much better in that type of intersection.
What kind of timeframe are we looking at?
It's like everything, sir. We got to find funding. We've got it in the capital program. In the out-years, we're starting to seek funding.
So it could be 12 years, 15 years, 20 years?
Could be, could be two years. It just all depends on the funding mechanism.
I guess my real concern, thank you, that's it. I just want you to verify that. My real concern with this project, and I, I don't have a problem with putting houses on that property. I think it's a good thing for that property. It's zoned for that. 179 homes and senior living, and we don't have to worry about the schools. As far as the O I and the commercial, I don't agree with what these guys are telling us. If commercial and O I could have gone there, they would have gone there already. The two can live together, particularly what would be put there. My concern is down the road, what happens 25 years from now? Are we not going to have any O I or commercial property left? We seem to be getting rid of all of it. It's not popular right now, but come tomorrow, it very likely will be popular. That's my one concern. My second concern is, we in this city are preaching walkable communities. If we're going to do this as a walkable community, convenient to downtown, and they want places to go, where are we going to let them walk to? Unless we can go into that community and put in some O I, or put in some commercial, or put in a small grocery, or, or a Rite Aid, or a, I mean, there's just so many options out there. But my real problem with this one is the schools. I'm sorry, I personally feel that we, as a council, have got to take a different attitude when it comes to our schools. Elephant's Fork is there on the CIP to be looked at, but we've been putting it off for so long. Is it fair to the people that live here for us to put, keep on putting it off and allowing more housing like this? That's why, personally, in my mind, I'm sticking with the 55 and older. I think the community could work there. I think that, I just think it would work better. I don't, I don't want to put 330 townhouses on that site with the amount of development we already have and the amount that's coming. Foxfield's right. We've got 30, 40 townhouses coming in the front there.
58.
58? Okay, thank you. A lot, a lot. That's, that's my concern with what we've got coming forward. I think the time is off. That's my concern. I'm not opposed to development, guys. I know you guys think I just hate development. I don't. I just want to see the right development for the future. The future worries the heck out of me, as far as how we're doing things. And that road, particularly with what we've got on it now, with the 460 project coming and everything that's going forward, we just need to be careful how we approach it. One other thing, and I'll leave it alone, back to Mr. Dubb about the Kings Fork High School, CIP, that worries me too, because we, as a council, have talked about Kings Fork needing an addition. And it's something we need to look at with the school board, because when we put all of this growth in these communities, every single time, we've got to look at it. So I do, I am concerned. I watch the planning. I know what, what happened there, and I know why it was turned down. And I'm sorry, but I kind of feel the same way. And that's it. You know, if, if I could vote for it, I would vote for it. I just cannot. And I don't think the people that live there want me to. I don't think the constituents want me to. I think, I don't think this is what's going to bring the rooftops that we need to get that Target store to that nice lady. I mean, you know, and we keep preaching rooftops in order to get all of these things in our community. It's partially true, but we got to do it the right way. Thank you.[1138.33][1138.33](APPLAUSE).
Counsel, any other questions or comments or a motion?
I will make a motion if I can.
Councilman Johnson?
I'm going to make a motion to deny.
Okay, we have a motion for denial from Councilman Johnson. Councilman Fawcett?
If I could, Mayor, there seems to be some people that are still interested in conversation. I don't think we're really where we want to be at this point. I would ask to make a motion to table this for 60 days for further review.
Make a substitute motion to table for 60 days?
There's no motion on the table.
Well, it's not a substitute because we didn't get a second. You're exactly right. I'm just making sure you're on your toes.[1194.15][1194.15](LAUGHING). And as usual, he is. Okay, we've got a motion from Councilman Fawcett to table for 60 days.
We would actually need a date, and that would be, I believe, June 19th.
June 19th, to June 19th. Okay, do we have any discussion of that motion?
We need a second.
Right, well, we need a second. Can we get a second to either motion? This one. Councilman Bennett?
Well, I was going to ask a question. Table this for 60 days, is this going to give the developer time to meet with the people that say that they have not had the opportunity to meet with them? Just a question.
Yes, I mean, it could.
Okay, all right. That was.
I believe Councilman Rector, did you want to speak, sir?
Yeah, I, thank you very much. I'll support the tabling primarily because, you know, we've been given a revised set of voluntary proffers that just were given to us right before the meeting, and some of them had to do with, you know, the timing of the issuance of occupancy permits and whatnot. So I'd be in support of the tabling, because I'd like to have a little bit of time to digest all this new information that's been given to us.
So you're second, Councilman Fawcett's motion to table? Okay, so we've got a motion on the floor to table for 60 days. Is there any other discussion of the motion? Hearing none, before we vote, I've got a few comments. I like the idea of tabling it, not so much to, well, I think it's quite obvious that the folks across the street didn't have an opportunity, or didn't feel like they were afforded the opportunity to get more details from the contractor. From my standpoint, I like this project, with the exception of the schools. The schools are an issue. The good thing about this proffer is that, you're exactly right, the only thing that's etched in stone in the capital improvement plan is the current year. That is the only thing etched in stone. But based on every conversation that we have had with the school system over the last year to 18 months, including a joint session meeting that we just had, is that there is absolutely no doubt in my mind, unequivocally, that Kings Fork will be the next school addressed. If you look at the capital improvement program, you will see, and I don't have it in front of me, so just in case I'm off a year or so, I don't want this to look, I'm trying to mislead anybody, but I believe that funding is going to start about three years from now, and then go through 2029. Is that correct? Does that sound right? Elephant's Fork, not Kings Fork, Elephant's Fork. Yeah, so Elephant's Fork is the issue. Elephant's Fork is overcapacity, and of course, Kilby still is too. The high school issue, the middle school issue, I mean, from a council standpoint, we talk about capacity, and then we talk about what schools are overcapacity, what schools are not overcapacity when we look at it citywide. Lakeland is at less than 80%. Kings Fork is right there. Nazimin Suffolk's at about a buck 20, so it's, it's high. There was, and there is, in the, I'm getting a little off-topic, but I might as well, since I get the opportunity. High school-wise, it's in the, the school's request for an addition to Nazimin River. They have moved it down rather than up. Personally, I'd like to see a 300 or 400-student addition to Nazimin River, a little bit of redistricting off of Kings Fork to go to Lakeland, and you've satisfied the high school capacity for about a decade without spending a lot, a lot of money. It's probably $20 million to do that. I look forward to the 60-day delay. I like the staging, but in my feeble opinion, it's not going to accomplish what it needs to accomplish, because basically, you're looking for a build-out in three years. And that's not going to happen. I mean, when I say, if you did build it out in three years, it's still too far behind, you know, where we're going to be. It doesn't necessarily have to align 100%, but from my standpoint, I'm looking at less of a build-out. So instead of doing it over a three-year period, we need to do it at least over a five- or six-year period. That would make it palatable to me, with me being reasonably assured, that Elephant's Fork, and we're not exactly sure where it's going to be, how big it's going to be, whether it's going to be consolidated, those are still ongoing issues or points of discussion with the school board. But unquestionably, unquestionably, yeah, things go on in CIP for a long time. I mean, the second, the second part of the CIP is everything six to 10 years out. That's how it's designed. It's by design. But Elephant's Fork is the next school to be built. Counsel's in agreeance with that. The school board's in agreeance with that, and nobody can argue with it. In regards to traffic and the other considerations, like a lot of these rezonings or conditional use permits that we look at, in this particular case, sometimes we're taking agricultural land, we're taking a big piece of green space, and we're going to put something on it. That's a different deal. Right now, we have what you can get by right, and it's been brought up by the proponents, but it is what it is. You can have certain things by right right now, including the traffic generation. It doesn't require any action by that council. It doesn't require any citizen input. Somebody can come in here tomorrow, and granted, they haven't done it yet, but that doesn't mean it's not going to happen. The same thing happened with warehouses. Most people don't realize it, but 10 or 15 years ago, you couldn't find anybody to fill the warehouse space. A lot of them changed hands. A lot of them financially did not do well. It's just recently, over the last five years or so, with the Port of Virginia, and their growth has been the catalyst behind warehouses. So things do change. So just because it wasn't done for the last 10 or 15 years or 20 years, doesn't mean it's going to happen. It was briefly mentioned, we've got C P, O N I, and R U. The R U component, the residential component, I agree. I mean, if it was 55 and above versus regular townhomes, then there is basically no strain on the school system, and the traffic patterns are different, which makes it a little bit more palatable. But the reality of it is, that market's really not there. The C P provides for flex space, office park. This is by right, doesn't require any action whatsoever. Flex space, office park, offices, contractors and trade shops, delivery and dispatch services, I'm not exactly sure what that is, research and development, those are all done by right. We talked about the flex space. Flex space is basically a small warehouse, is what it is. It's not as, can't be as tall, and it can't be as many square feet. You know, because it's not as tall, you don't have as many ways to unload and load things. So it's not a full-blown warehouse. But it's usually, flex space buildings are typically located in business or industrial parks and usually exceed 10,000 square feet in area. And then it's limited in height to 28 feet. But bottom line is, right across from you, in this exact same property, without asking anybody's permission, we could have, basically, what's a warehouse? It's a smaller one. Warehouses come with truck traffic. They don't come with cars. Personally speaking, I think we're going to have, with Port 460 coming onboard and some other things, anything that we can look at that's going to preclude us from having more truck traffic. Now, yes, you'll have some passenger cars going down Pitch Kettle, but that's much better than truck traffic not taking a right and going down Pitch Kettle. So these can be done by right. So I think it's a better scenario. The O N I allows for residential hotel. It also allows for temporary shelters for transitional housing, research and development lab. These are things that are in the U D O that are allowed by right, and somebody can just decide that they want to put over there. So I'm in favor of the 60 days. I've had comments referring to the developers, and they, I've heard that they produce an excellent product. I don't think that's, that's in question. The proffers are more than generous in that they didn't have to provide a proffer for the middle schools. They took that $1 million and added to the elementary school, which is $3 million and some change. Uh... which is three million and some change, uh, that in itself is not enough to motivate, would motivate me to do it if the school was ten years off, because we still have to deal with the overcapacity. So I'm hoping with the sixty-day delay, we can come up with a little staging that'll spread it out a little bit more, so it would come closer to aligning with the build-out with an elementary school. Uh, so as, if there's no other discussion, if council have any other questions or comments, um, if not, we have a motion on the floor from Councilman Fawcett to table, uh, this, this for, issued for sixty days, which was seconded by Councilman Rector. So if there's no further discussion of the motion, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please recor, I'm sorry, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Okay, we move, uh, our next public hearing was the ordinance to establish, uh, surface mining operations, borough pits, on property located sixty-five oh one, sixty-seven oh one Holly Neck Road, zoning map forty-nine, that has been withdrawn per their request, I'm sorry, did I miss one?
You missed one.
Dang, go on.
You got the solar field farm.
Oh, man, I was trying to get out of here, okay. Okay, sorry about that, I swear did. Okay, our next public hearing is an ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish a solar energy facility on property located at fifteen fifty-three Kings Fork Road, zoning map twenty-four, parcel thirty-two, account number two-five-one-zero-eight-one-one-five-zero, this is CUP twenty-twenty-three nineteen. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Uh, yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, uh, members of council, Kevin Wine will provide the staff report on this item also.
Thank you again, Mr. Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. This conditional use permit request before you today is to establish a solar energy facility use at fifteen fifty-three Kings Fork Road. This property is located within our central growth area, and it's designated for land use as suburban use district. See the property here, um, the property's currently, uh, zoned A, agricultural zoning district, uh, to the north of the subject property is Kings Fork Road, uh, followed by some agricultural land, zoned RE, rural state, uh, to the east, you have primarily forested land, uh, with, um, a commercial structure, zoned A agricultural, uh, to the west, you have a vacant field, zoned, uh, A agricultural, and property zoned M-two, heavy industrial, uh, that property will be a part of the Port four sixty logistics development, and to the south is a field, uh, that will also be a part of the Port four sixty logistics, uh, development, zoned M-two, and then you have Nansaman Suffolk Academy and, uh, some of their athletic fields, zoned O-I, uh, office institutional use. Uh, here, the applicant is requesting to establish a solar energy facility, uh, the fenced project area will encompass thirty-six acres of property, uh, with thirty-two acres of solar panel array coverage. Uh, they have provided, uh, enhanced setbacks, a three-hundred-foot front setback and a hundred-and-fifty-foot side setback, um, including landscape buffers, a fifty-foot, uh, front vegetated buffer and a twenty-foot, uh, twenty-five-foot side vegetated buffer, uh, consisting of preserved trees and plantings adjacent to Kings Fork Road, as well as adjoining properties to minimize the potential for adverse, uh, visual impacts with respect to the use and enjoyment of the surrounding properties. Uh, the nearest residence to the prop, uh, the project's racking area is approximately seven-hundred-and-fifty feet, uh, and over eight-hundred feet from the project's inverters. Uh, in order to confirm that noise emitted by the proposed inverters will not exceed the city performance standards as set in the UDO for solar energy facility uses, the applicant, uh, did prepare and provide a sound study. Uh, the report's findings, in this case, demonstrate that the highest simulated noise levels from the equipment pads, uh, measured at the nearest residential receiving properties remain below the limits prescribed in the UDO, uh, regardless of the time of day, uh, which the noise will be generated from the facility. Uh, here you have some visual illustrations, um, you have, uh, five and ten years here to, to review, uh, these were provided, um, relative to existing conditions, uh, from the public right of way Kings Fork Road, um, to demonstrate what the visual impact of the facility will look like from the same vantage point, um, over time, once the planted vegetation is established. So from the time of planning, five years, and then ten years. Uh, as we discuss with these types of uses, uh, they are not traffic generators once they are developed, however, there are concerns, particularly, uh, due to location at the time of construction, um, as such, they have provided, uh, what would be the haul route, uh, for construction and, uh, the decommissioning of the solar facility. Um, it would be restricted, uh, to ingress, egress to the site going eastbound on Kings Fork Road to Pruden Boulevard, and the haul route is restricted from utilizing Providence Road and Pitch Kettle Road. So, uh, the proposed use is not anticipated to produce any adverse impacts, but, um, it is inconsistent with the central growth area, uh, specifically the suburban use district in this case, uh, as identified in the comprehensive plan. Uh, the comprehensive plan in the suburban use district, uh, within the, the central growth area encourages traditional, uh, residential subdivisions, uh, primarily at a lower density, retail uses primarily, uh, neighborhood scaled, such as small convenience, retail, professional offices, community facilities, um, and special districts where appropriate. Uh, in this case, it's staff's opinion that the site in question is not appropriate for the proposed use, given the location within the central growth area, um, specifically on land designated as suburban use district. Uh, therefore, we are recommending, uh, denial of conditional use permit request, CUP twenty-twenty-three zero nineteen. Uh, however, in the event that, uh, council acts to, um, approve this application this evening, uh, there are conditions, uh, that we would recommend under those circumstances, uh, that would be appropriate to include in your report, uh, particularly as it relates to ensuring the compatibility of the proposed use with the surrounding neighborhood. Uh, the planning commission at their meeting on March nineteenth, uh, voted seven to one, uh, to deny this app, uh, deny recommendation of this application before you this evening. Uh, that concludes my presentation on this request, I'll be happy to stand by the conclusion of the public hearing for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Wine. Uh, before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, will you please explain the timing system?
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address, we will have a ten-minute period for the proponents, a fifteen-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five minutes for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing, will the first speaker please come forward to speak in favor of this ordinance?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, my name is Patrick Harper, I'm a project developer with Cypress Creek Renewables, speaking to you tonight on behalf of the Nansaman Solar Team. My work address is forty-five, uh, Banks Avenue, Asheville, North Carolina, two-eight-eight oh one. Like to first thank staff and all of the community members who've worked with us on this proposal to help us make the strongest project possible. Before I get to it, let me briefly introduce Cypress Creek. We develop, own, and operate solar standalone storage and hybrid projects across the US. We're headquartered in Santa Monica, California, closer to Suffolk, we have offices in Durham and DC. Since our founding in two thousand fourteen, we've developed over eight hundred projects across twenty-three states, representing twelve gigawatts of generating capacity. We're also the fourth-largest solar O and M provider in the US. We manage hundreds of both our own assets and facilities developed by third parties, including some here in Virginia and in Suffolk. And our approach to development is pretty simple, we develop best-in-class projects that are responsibly sited, responsibly designed, and provide a broad range of benefits to their host communities, and that's what we're proposing here with Nansaman Solar. Now, as you heard in the staff report, this project poses no adverse impacts to view sheds, noise, traffic, property values, public health, and outside of its location in the central growth area, send the public interest. We're bringing this proposal forward for council consideration, because we feel the benefits it offers outweighs the concerns over location. So let's talk about benefits, and let's talk about location. This project is gonna generate enough low-cost, emissions-free electricity to power over eight hundred homes. Through Dominion's shared solar program, low-to-moderate income households will be eligible to subscribe to the electricity generated and save ten percent on their utility bill. This is a savings product for community members who need the help the most, who have the highest energy burden, who are impacted the most when rates rise, and Dominion's currently forecasting rates to increase by four-point-six percent annually through two thousand thirty-five, we can help. By approving this project, this project, we can make sure that as many Suffolk residents as possible know about this program and are participating. For the city, this project is gonna, gonna generate over a million dollars in, uh, tax revenues, along with a monetary contribution, while posing no corresponding burden on services and infrastructure, schools, and roads. So this is a fiscally sustainable land use choice that will help the city achieve its goal of maintaining, uh, a high-quality level of service as growth occurs. For the community, this project represents over seven million dollars in project spending, where we'll be using local labor and materials to the extent possible. It includes a seven-hundred-thousand-dollar private sector investment to strengthen and modernize the local grid, along with a range of community donations. Environmentally, this project will offset over seven thousand metric tons of CO2 emissions annually, and that's why we do what we do, decarbonizing the grid to avoid the most extreme impacts of climate change. And from that perspective, using ag land for a solar project is not a sideways trade, not even close to it. So here's where this gets interesting and where location comes into play. This project is gonna benefit its neighbors. This area is about to change drastically with the development of Port four sixty, which abuts our project parcel to the south and southwest, it's gonna generate a significant amount of traffic in an area that's already dealing with congestion, our project is gonna generate virtually none, it's a great complementary use. Port four sixty is going to significantly alter the local area's aesthetic and community character, our project can help preserve it. How? It's gonna be set back three hundred feet from Kings Fork Road with a fifty-foot landscaping buffer to fully screen it from off-site view, and the site's front acreage is gonna be preserved for continued crop production. So when you drive down Kings Fork Road, you're gonna see cotton or wheat, depending on the time of the year, native shrubs, grasses and trees, some utility poles, and that's it, pretty much what you see today. This project is also gonna serve as a buffer, a transitionary land use for the residents north of Kings Fork Road to Port four sixty. So this location is practical in terms of land use compatibility with Port four sixty and other surrounding properties, a cemetery and a school, it's practical in terms of distance to residential, over seven-hundred-and-fifty feet to the nearest house, you're not gonna see it, you're not gonna hear it, it's a great location in terms of proximity to utility infrastructure, it's two miles from the Kings Fork Substation, which is the biggest limiting factor in citing these projects and why you're not seeing them to the south of the city, uh, outside of the Holland area. It's a good fit in terms of ordinance alignment, it's fully aligned with the old ordinance, it meets or exceeds seventeen of the eighteen standards in the new solar ordinance, and it's a good fit in terms of avoiding environmental, cultural, and, uh, historic resources, there's very minimal impact here, there are four marked graves, uh, to the interior of this property, our project can easily maintain a one-hundred-foot buffer to those graves to ensure there's no impact, that's gonna be much more challenging for any other type of development. So here are the two primary concerns regarding location. First, it's on the outer edge of the central growth area, which is marked by Kings Fork Road and Pitch Kettle Road. So what are the opportunity costs here? This prod, this prod, this property is not a great fit for residential, I'm not sure you wouldn't put a residential use in the backyard of an industrial warehouse, the twenty-fourty-five comp plan actually calls for this property to be rezoned to M-one, M-two, or CP, and the land used to be updated from suburban to employment center. But if you speak to the neighbors, which we've done extensively, I've knocked on the door of every home and business west of Pruden Bou, Boulevard within a quarter mile of this site, we've held a community meeting, I've spoken at other community meetings, we've met one-on-one with key stakeholders, and what they'll tell you, the neighbors don't wanna see this land used for manufacturing, warehouses, or other use types that you see in an employment center, because they already have five million square feet of that going up next door, that's enough. And after understanding what we're proposing, the setbacks, the buffers, the crops, even neighbors that aren't fans of solar agreed that they'd rather see this property used for a low-impact project like what we're proposing here, than more intense types of development, even residential, even neighborhood retail use that are only going to add more cars to the road. So lastly, the second issue, I'm okay with solar, I just wanna see it on rooftops and impervious surface, and that is happening, the state is working on incentives for just that. Now, those future projects don't negate the value that this proposal can provide. This project is also a temporary land use, at the end of its useful life, the facility will be decommissioned, the site will be restored as close as possible to its pre-existing condition, and this property can be converted to whatever new use the city needs at that time, that's a pretty valuable perspective. So we're not gonna rooftop our way out of climate change, or build enough capacity, rooftop capacity to meet rising demand. It's gonna require an all-the-above approach, this project can be part of that solution, it can help a lot of people, and we respectfully request council's approval. Thank you for your time and consideration, I'm, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, sir. Okay, that concludes the time for the opponents, uh, we'll now move to fifteen minutes, uh, for the proponents, now move to fifteen minutes for the opponents, those that are opposed, do we have anybody that wants to speak? Ten minutes? No, no, ten fifteen five. Ten fifteen five, y'all. Every now and then I'm right, you know, even a blind squirrel gets a nod every now and then. Okay, we got fifteen minutes for the opponents, if anybody likes speaking opposition. Hearing none, we've got a five-minute rebuttal period, I don't know if there's much to rebut.
Christopher Dove, eight fifty-two, Colonel Lee Drive, Suffolk, Virginia, two-three-four three-four.
Mr. Dove, are you speaking in rebuttal?
Uh, no, I'm, yeah, I'm speaking in rebuttal, yeah.
Okay, well.
Uh, specifically, uh, I have to raise the male bovine flag here, the, uh, staff opinion this site is inappropriate, given the location for central growth area, specifically, since it's supposed to be a residential area. So why the heck did staff approve a high, heavy industry industrial site right next door in the exact same central growth area, residential? The, the project that you approved includes industrial, uh, uses, not limited to truck terminals, truck, plus, I'm responding to the city staff's, uh, in rebuttal.
Are you responding in regards specifically to this ordinance?
Yes, I am.
Sounds like we're talking about another one.
It's an example.
Not only example, you need to speak to this ordinance.
I am speaking to this ordinance.
And you're gonna speak in favor of it.
I'm speaking in favor of it, yes, I'm using this as an example. If you wanna edit what I say, Mayor, then that's fine, but I think it's a violation of my First Amendment rights, is that what you would like, or what?
Just speak in favor of it.
I'm speaking in favor of it.
Okay.
Right now, the city staff has said that they don't recommend it, because it's in the central growth area, and it's in a residential designated area. growth area and it's in a residential-designated area. I'm rebutting that and saying that they're... Why did they go ahead and approve a heavy industry area with truck sales, fuel sales, heavy equipment, industrial storage, machine shops, waste-related above-ground, and waste-related above-ground storage tanks, no less? So staff opinion that a heavy industry site fit into the planned residential rural area, but a small green energy solar farm does not. I'd like Councilman Johnson to have staff explain why 540 acres is okay to rezone, but this small parcel is not.
I guess that was a rebuttal. We're still in the rebuttal periods. This is speak in favor.
I am speaking in favor of the project. Yes, I am. This is a... And I agree with what Mr. Dove said, but I would like to point out that this is a very well-thought-out project. They submitted four updates to this proposal within a six-month timeframe, and the planning staff provided seven recommendations for conditions that the developer agrees to. A solar farm, I listened to their presentation at the Planning Commission twice. A solar farm would mean NSA would have potential access to create a back entrance to their campus as truck traffic ratchets up, 90%, and the mayor himself gave me that figure the other day from Port 460. So the property owner is willing to provide that access to NSA. It is going to preserve a corner of that property, as they say, for time for the city to decide what we would like that to be. By the time that Port 460 is completed, which we all know will take 15 to 20 years, we will then still have this nice property, still green, and still growing things. I even heard, when they made their presentation, heard him talk about how they were going to select pollinator plants. So this is a great project. The front of the property is going to be reserved for small farming, which the current leasing farmer said that he's willing to do. The developer and the landowner have taken extensive efforts to communicate with the community. One of the persons that they communicated with was Jerry Celia, who is one of Citizens' Voice board members, and Citizens' Voice gave me permission to talk about this tonight on their behalf. And he was also a plaintiff in the Port 460 suit. He is perfectly happy to have a solar farm there next to our coming warehouse and distribution center. The owners clearly have a sentimental attachment to this property, and they express their interest in maintaining it as green development. They don't want to. They're trying to, as they said, maintain a financial responsibility to their family while trying to keep an area green in our city that they have a sentimental and deep family attachment to. So why Mr. Jesse Williams, who owned 10 times the property that they owned, was... We talked a lot about his property rights, but we're not talking about these people's property rights. It doesn't make sense to me why the planning department would turn this down on the same basis that they approved Port 460.
Okay, we got 38 seconds. If anyone else would like to speak in favor?
My name is Harold Tweedy. My current address is 600 Eagle Lake Trail, Apartment 2317, Rome, Georgia. And I'll be extremely brief, especially because of the time, and I think the lady who I've not met pretty sums up what my brother and I feel about the property, that it is important to us. We want the best for our families, obviously, but we also want something that's going to give Suffolk and the Kings Fork community, where my grandparents lived, my aunt lived. We want the community to benefit from that land, not simply use it necessarily for commercial Again, I guess I'll just skip a lot of the things that she said that I had in my presentation, but again, I certainly appreciate her comments and support. I've thought a lot about the property and its future. As she mentioned, 10, 15, 20 years from now, things will change. That's undeniable. The Cypress Creek Solar Agreement with us, their agreement and obligations under this CUP for solar that require funds to cover decommissioning, and that's not decommissioning in two years or five years or necessarily 20 years. It's whenever energy production from the site ceases. And that type of guarantee, I know I've seen where I live in Georgia, commercial developments can wax and wane, depending on the economy, other things. And many times, what results from that is left to the community to handle, either economically or decision-wise. What is this property going to be used for?
Sir, your time is up. If you just go ahead and wrap it up, please.
I appreciate you listening and ask that you do approve the application. I think it can benefit Suffolk as well as any type of commercial development. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. This public hearing is now closed. Counsel, questions, comments, or a motion would be in order? Don't jump in here all at one time. Counselmember Butler Barlow.
I have some questions, and I guess maybe Kevin might be up for this, but I just have several questions that I've made a record of. I'm curious, I know that the proposal is supposed to benefit low-income residents, and I wondered, you know, how does that work? How does people sign up? I mean, how do you decide that you want to sign up for solar? You know, do you have to live next to it? Or does anybody... Can anybody tell me that?
Who'd like to come up and answer their question?
It's about as simple as signing up for a streaming service. You go to a website, you enter your information. That's it. Your next bill, you're saving 10%. There are over 20 states with these similar types of programs available, up and running. This is not a new concept. It's just new to Virginia. It's been around for roughly two years now. The first set of projects are coming online, and it has a lot of demand. It's been met very well.
Is it... So is this through a shared energy thing through Dominion, or do you have to live next door? Or is it just people that live...
No, ma'am. It's a program offered through Dominion where any qualifying customer, in this case, a low-income household, could subscribe to electricity generated. We, as the facility owner, provide electricity to Dominion. We go out and find the subscribers. We manage that relationship. From the subscriber's perspective, they see a bill credit on their bill, they see their charge at the agreed-to rate, a 10% savings, and then that's pretty much it.
Okay. All right. Thank you. You might as well just stay there, I think. What is the terms of the lease on this particular facility? What's the length of the lease?
So it's a 20-year contract with four, five-year extension options.
And in addition to that, so it's 20 years, and I know we're bonded so that it can be decommissioned and you say put back. Have you ever decommissioned a solar facility?
Yes, we have.
Successfully?
Yes, ma'am.
Where?
In North Carolina.
What size?
It's a 1 megawatt site.
Okay. And it's got returned to...
I don't know. This was on a military base. It was not a project that I was working on directly. It was just one that Cypress Creek managed.
Okay, so it wasn't 50 acres of agricultural land that was returned to agricultural land?
No, ma'am.
Okay. I don't think there... I don't think that's been done, and that's a concern of mine, that, you know, we say we're going to put it back, but how will we put it back? And what's the condition of the soil if you've taken all the topsoil and so on and so forth?
Yeah, so in terms of removing the equipment, we're talking about post-racking. It's about as easy as it can be. In terms of soil health, there is some compaction. There are best management practices that we can address in our construction plan to minimize compaction, to preserve topsoil, to maintain soil health, so that if you did choose to use this site in the future for crop production, that is a viable use. You might see slightly lower yields while the soil is adjusting in that period. There's a soil scientist at Virginia Tech who's studied this extensively, and I'd be glad to share his contact info with you.
I know who you're talking about, so thank you. One more question for you, and then I think my other question is for planning. Just last week, up in Alawak County, at one of the major solar projects up there, there were two huge fires. And I think access for firefighters, I mean, hopefully you know about this, and I, you know, I don't think it's a... It's not a rare thing. I don't think it's super common either, but I saw some pictures of it, and it was pretty alarming. It was a big fire. So what kind of experience do you have with that sort of situation?
Yeah, so fires at solar farms are rare. You don't see it often. You know, as part of our commitment to the community, we're providing training for our local EMS service to make sure that they are fully aware of how to respond to a fire should an incident occur. We'll have an emergency preparedness response plan in place, and we'll make sure that the community is ready to address the situation should the need arise.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you for that. I have one question for planning. So we have a cap now on the amount of solar through our new solar ordinance, but this is within the growth ring. Does that count towards the total?
It still counts, yes.
All right. All right. I think that's all my questions for now.
Counsel, any other questions, comments, or a motion? Councilman Fawcett.
Mayor, we've had some good conversation about solar tonight, for sure, and I appreciate Ms. Meriden coming up and giving us her piece on that. I'd like to go ahead and move to approve this ordinance to allow CUP 2023-019 to move forward.
We got a motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett. Councilman Williams?
Seconded, Mayor.
And a second from Councilman Williams. Is there any further discussion of the motion? Before we vote, I'll just comment briefly. I watched the Planning Commission meeting several times. I believe this project is... will be a win-win for everybody. It does butt up to Port 460, so it's going to offer a rather substantial buffer between the back of that and Kings Fork Road. The 300-foot setback is what sold me on it. I think it creates, was it five to eight acres worth of green space, which would... could still be cultivated along with the additional screening. So with everything else there, and the reason that the staff did not recommend it is because it is in a growth area. But this is one case, like we say, we say the comprehensive plan is a plan. So it's on the edge of this central growth area, but when you look at the pros and the cons, it appears to me that we're much better off with the solar, which is absolutely, as far as adequate facilities concerned, no effect on the schools, no effect on traffic. It's basically going to be pretty benign when it's put in and provide a very nice buffer for that area for upcoming years. So with that being said, I'd like to lend my support for it also before we vote. Is there any other questions or comments? If not, I will ask, call for the vote. Councilmembers, prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of 5 to 3, with Councilmember Bennett, Councilmember Butler Barlow, and Councilmember Johnson voting in opposition.
Okay, now we're going to item number 15, which is a public hearing that has been withdrawn. Oh, I would like to clarify one thing. The increase in traffic that I referred to during my Facebook was not directly related to Port 460, but the traffic that would be generated from the port with or without 460. Those figures come from the Hampton Roads Plan and Transportation Organization, based on their predictions and traffic that will eventually end up on 460. So I just wanted to clarify that. Okay, now we're going to go to our next public hearing, which is an ordinance to grant a variance to the street improvement standards of Section 31-612F of the Unified Development Ordinance for relief from the connectivity ratio standards on property located in Tax Map 35, Parcel 92, Account Number 300951000. This is SBV 202301. And before we open the public hearing, at this time, Vice Mayor Ward would like to make a statement.
Yes, sir. I am disqualified from participating in this agenda, Agenda Number 61.
Because I have a personal interest, I have given my letter to the clerk.
Okay, Vice Mayor Ward, I'm sorry I didn't turn him on early, but he is disqualified himself from voting because of a conflict interest. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, will you please explain the timing system?
Mr. Wine is here for the staff report.
Yeah, let's do a staff. I'm trying to move things along here. You're killing me. Okay.
Vice versa.
Mr. Manager, please give us an overview.
Mr. Wine will give the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mayor, members of counsel. As stated, this is a request for a subdivision variance specifically for relief from our minimum connectivity ratio requirement as outlined in the Unified Development Ordinance for the construction of public roadways. This relates to the Prospect West subdivision. It's located on Prospect Road, near its intersection with Portsmouth Boulevard. Here you have the property. Back in November of 2021, the property was rezoned from RLM to REU Conditional, which proposed the development of 15 single-family residential lots on this property. The development on this property would be contingent on the subdivision variance request as the ability to loop access internally to the site is limited due to limited front edge-long prospect. So in essence, this is what the request is. We've discussed our connectivity ratios as it relates to subdivision design standards before you all before, but essentially, it limits these dead-end streets for subdivision requests. Here in red, you see the proposed cost in court. That would be a link, and you have one node, which would be the intersection of the cul-de-sac point internal, meaning that one link divided by one node equals one, which is less than the 1.4 required by the Unified Development Ordinance for subdivisions. The purpose of this is to increase and encourage connectivity, a connected street system, limit dead ends, allow for better, more appropriate access for emergency personnel and other public services like refuse collection, mail services, et cetera. There are four criteria that we've established when it... as it relates to variance requests that need to come into play. One is granting the variance exception or waiver of conditions will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, welfare, or interest to the other... any other property. The conditions upon which the request is based are unique to the property for which the relief is sought and not applicable generally to other property. Because the particular physical surroundings shape are typographical conditions of the specific property involved, a particular hardship to the owner would result, as distinguished from a mere inconvenience if the stricter letter of these regulations carried out. And four, the relief sought will not in any manner vary the provisions of the zoning ordinance, Article 4 Comprehensive Plan, or official map of the City of Suffolk, except those documents may be amended in a manner prescribed by law. So in this case, staff has evaluated the application. So in this case, staff has evaluated the application. It does check the boxes as it relates to the subdivision variance criteria for relief, and thus, staff is recommending approval. Lastly, the planning commission, at their meeting last month, by a vote of eight to zero, are forwarding this application to you all with a recommendation for approval, with the conditions as outlined in staff's report. That concludes my presentation on this item. I'll be happy to stand by at the conclusion of the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Wine. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address. We will have a 10-minute period for the proponents, a 15-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five minutes for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address, and that is to speak in favor of this ordinance?
Good evening, Mayor Doeman. Vice Mayor Ward, members of city council, and staff. My name is Grady Palmer. Business address, 999 Waterside Drive in the City of Norfolk. I will be brief. I don't know that this needs 10 minutes of presentation, but I do just want to note that when this property was presented to council back in 2021 for rezoning, this was -- and Will Stein here with Coastal is here, and he can discuss some of the details. But I think this was what was presented to council and was approved for the rezoning. So it's what everyone has been expecting. The timing of it, just the engineer died, and the engineer that worked on this project died, and so there were some delays in getting the approvals sequenced, and so now we're finally coming back to council on the subdivision variance, but it's a pretty minor variance. Doesn't create any precedence that you don't want, so meets all the criteria, so we would ask for your approval tonight. Thank you.
We have our next speaker to speak in favor of this ordinance. Is there anyone else present who would like to speak in favor? Hearing none. Do we have anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Is there anyone present who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Hearing none. That concludes our speakers. Council questions, comments, or a motion? Councilman Bennett?
I move for approval.
And a motion for approval from Councilman Bennett. Councilman Rector?
Seconded.
Seconded from Councilman Rector. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Council members, prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero, noting that Vice Mayor Ward did disqualify himself from acting and participating in this item.
Okay, do we need to get the Vice Mayor? You got him? Welcome back there, Vice Mayor. Okay, our final public hearing is an ordinance to amend Section 31-301 of the Unified Development Ordinance of the City of Suffolk, Virginia, in order to revise certain notice provisions. This is OTA 2024-3. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Kevin Wine will provide the staff report on this one also.
Thank you again, Mr. Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. This ordinance text amendment that I'll discuss with you this evening is a reflection of the new improved public hearing notification signs that the city has recently started working with, and it stems from the fact that there's a lot more information on these signs. They're much more effective. They're much more highly visible. As such, we're taking this as an opportunity to present for your consideration ordinance text amendment that would modify the number of signs that would be required along public rights-of-way for notification of land use public hearings. Here you can see the comparison of our current sign, much larger. I joke with our staff, it's essentially a billboard, versus our older sign, which is essentially a SNIPE sign with limited information. The new sign is four times larger in overall square area. So it also has a lot of room for additional information that is just not available on our old signs, such as a more detailed description of the case. Now folks can actually look at the sign, and they'll be able to know what the actual land use matter is, what they ask for, whether it's a CUP, whether it's a rezoning. That information is here, as well as the actual public hearing date and time, and a variety of information at the bottom of the sign to obtain any information they would like to about a case. This is all information that was not on our previous sign. So the provision in question here is in Article 3, related to our procedure, Section 31-301 General Provisions. Essentially, what this states is, "One sign shall be erected so as to be visible and legible to each abutting public street. Where the property has extensive road frontage, one sign shall be erected for each 500 feet." The proposal before you this evening, we are recommending that that accommodate the new sign and be adjusted from 500 feet to 2,000. This example here is a recent conditional use permit. This was the Barnes Wedding Venue, you may recall. This was not that long ago. This is an example of an extensive public frontage. In this case, four signs were required, and I could totally see why that was the case with our old signs. However, under the new provisions, a property of this nature, one sign with a lot of information being highly visible from the right-of-way. So with that being said, this item was presented to Planning Commission at their meeting on March 19th, and they are recommending its approval to you all this evening by a vote of eight to zero. That concludes my presentation on this item. I'll be happy to stand by at the conclusion of the public hearing for any comments.
Thank you, Mr. Wine. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address, and will receive three minutes to offer their comments.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address? Do we have anyone present who would like to speak to this ordinance? Hearing those speakers, this public hearing is now closed. Council, questions, comments, or a motion? Councilman Fawcett?
Move to approve, Mayor.
And a motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett. Councilman Johnson?
And I'll second. I have one question. Just clarify something. If it's on a corner lot, the property's on a corner, even if it's 2,000 on the front, you're still going to go down the road and put another one right on the other side, facing the other road. Isn't that what I read?
For every unique road frontage it has, you would put a sign. So on a corner lot, one on each corner.
The signs have just been so well-received. I can't tell you something that's created such a -- so it's a good thing. So I'll second.
Okay, we get a motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett, a second from Councilman Johnson. Do we have any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Council members, prepare to vote. What happened? Oh, there's another one. Councilman Rector?
Kevin, do you mind coming back to the podium? I think the new signs are great. My only question or concern is, and if you go back to that example that you showed about the wedding venue, when you have that much continuous road frontage, is one -- you know, I realize because the size of the signs, you know, is sort of equating the same number of square footage of sign, but in an incident like this where you have that much road frontage, would a minimum of two signs be helpful to sort of define where the property is? I mean, if you just put one sign in the middle of that property, do people really get an understanding of how big the property is?
I think that's a fair question. Our perspective is that the new signs are such an improvement of conveying information. Their location on the property anywhere serves the purpose, which is notifying the public. In a case like this, I'm not sure having multiple giant signs would benefit, because one sign on the property certainly conveys that message.
Okay, any other questions or comments? If not, council members, prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We do have several ordinances this evening. The first is, what did I miss? The first is an ordinance to rezone, amend the official zoning map of the City of Suffolk in order to amend the previously approved property conditions of the Hallstead Reserve Residential Development for property located on Pruden Boulevard, Hallstead Boulevard, and Murphy's Mill Road, Zoning Map 25, Parcell 56 and 56 asterisk 1. This is RZN 2024-5 Conditional. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Kevin will provide his last report this evening.
Hopefully. I'm not sure I have anything else. Thank you again, Mr. Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor. This is an ordinance for your consideration this evening. It is a request to amend previously approved proffers as it relates to the Hallstead Reserve rezoning that you all initially considered back in 2019. Here's the property. It's at multiple properties at this point. It's bisected by the installed Hallstead Boulevard, but it fronts on both Pruden and a smaller portion on Murphy's Mill. This project at this point is well under development. So a brief history on this, it was approved in 2019 for 414 units. Those consist of multifamily, primarily multifamily, but also some quadplexes as well. Forty-eight acres in total were rezoned from B2 to RU12. A smaller portion of B2 was preserved at the front of the site. This proffer was amended in 2020 to allow for flexibility as it relates to the composition of units based on the number of bedrooms. That was approved. What this amendment would do would allow the city to, in lieu of improvements as outlined within the traffic impact assessment associated with this development at the time of initial rezoning, it would allow the city to accept $196,367.38 towards its CIP project entitled Route 460 Improvements. This is in the CIP. Those improvements that were outlined in the TIA had to do with a Route 58 bypass enclosure of one of the off-ramps from the north onto Pruden Boulevard, essentially eliminating a left-hand turn. And then it would force traffic westbound on 460 to the Northfield Road intersection and force them to make a U-turn. The reason that this is no longer needed is because the rezoning for Port 460 adjacent to the site, circumstances have changed. There are much larger improvements needed now, and the city has a CIP project to make enhancements and improvements to this intersection that do not align with what was originally put into that TIA reviewed by the city. So with that being said, staff recommends the cash contribution in the amount of $196,367.38 be accepted in lieu of the improvements detailed in the TIA. As this is a proffer amendment that does not impact density or intensity of use, the UDO allows for city council to consider this item without need of a public hearing. So that concludes my presentation. I can stand by for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Wine. Council, an ordinance has been presented for consideration. What's your pleasure? Councilman Rector?
Make a motion to approve.
We've got a motion for approval from Councilman Rector. Councilman Fawcett?
Seconded his motion.
Seconded from Councilman Fawcett. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Council members, prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next ordinance is consent agenda number 10. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, I'll ask Kevin Hughes to come to the microphone real quick to brief you. As you know, work session today, and you had a briefing on the downtown advisory committee.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. To give a quick summary of what was discussed at the work session before you is a revised and amended ordinance that would establish the downtown advisory committee. The goal of the committee is to assist with the master plan that was adopted by city council in 2018 and revised here recently, to assist in the vibrancy and redevelopment of all good things in our downtown area. We're proposing 11 representatives, one from arts and culture, one from culinary and restaurant, one in retail, one professional, one hospitality, one real estate, two downtown residents. We identify the influence area in the master plan as the downtown area. There would be three at-large members not living in the downtown area. The city manager would have a designee, and then we'd have representation from the Suffolk Borough City Council member, as well as the Whaleyville Borough City Council member.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll ask for questions, comments, or a motion to accept the downtown advisory committee ordinance as amended to include two liaisons to the committee, Suffolk Borough and Whaleyville Borough. Councilman Fawcett?
Move to approve, Mayor.
A motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett. Councilman Johnson?
Seconded.
Seconded from Councilman Johnson. Is there any discussion of the motion? Councilman Rector?
If it's possible, I'd like to make a minor adjustment to the motion, if I can, with your permission, Councilman Fawcett. Under the definition of professional, where it says professional shall mean licensed or certified accountant, architect, banker, or civil engineer, I'd like to strike the word civil in front of engineer, and then also take out the word whore and put another comma in there, and then have it include medical or legal. Because I think the definition precludes a lot of professionals that work in the downtown area, particularly, obviously, both in the medical and the legal professions. And I think potentially some of those folks would be either now or in the future valuable additives to the committee. So I'd like to amend the motion if it's all right with Councilman Fawcett.
Councilman Fawcett, are you amenable to doing that, to add those conditions? Okay, so we've got a motion on the floor to accept the downtown advisory committee as amended, which includes the amendments suggested by Councilman Rector.
And I'll go ahead and second that.
And you seconded. Is there any discussion? Any discussion of the motion? Councilman Johnson?
It's fine.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, Councilman Johnson seconded.
He can second it.
Okay. Is that okay with you? I got you backwards. All right, Johnson, you messed everything up. Councilman Johnson, are you okay with those amendments? Okay, so you can remain to second with the suggestions from Councilman Rector. Keep everything fair. Okay, how's that sound? We all right? Okay, any further discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Council members, prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
we also need to address the application process. So would this be the proper time to bring that up? Mr. City Attorney?
It's germane to what you just adopted, or you can wait till new business. It's up to the chair.
Okay, since it's germane, someone can make a motion now. Mr. Germain Rector?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that the city manager be directed to draft a resolution outlining an application process for selecting individuals interested in serving on the downtown advisory committee.
Councilman Fawcett?
Seconded, Mr. Rector.
Okay, we've got a motion from Councilman Rector, seconded by Councilman Fawcett, to draft a resolution outlining the application process. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Council members, prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We have no resolutions, no staff reports. We do have a motion to schedule a joint work session of city council and Suffolk Planning Commission for Wednesday, May 1, 2024, at 3:00 p.m., unless canceled by the mayor and city manager. A motion would be A motion would be in order. Councilman Johnson.
So move.
And a motion for approval from Council Johnson, Councilmember Butler Barlow.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Butler Barlow. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We'll now move to non-agenda speakers. Madam Clerk, do we have any non-agenda speakers? And if so, please explain the guidelines.
We have no individuals registered under this portion of the agenda, Mayor.
All right, well, we will be moving with deliberate speed to new business. Madam Clerk, are there any additions to tonight's agenda?
The following items are considered, have been presented for council's consideration under new business. A motion to nominate and appoint the following individuals to the respective bodies. The Agricultural Advisory Commission, the Agriculture and Natural Resources Agent, and that nominee is Andrea Davis. The second item is a nomination to the Fine Arts Commission, and that nominee is Kristin Henson.
Councilman Williams.
Move for approval.
Got a motion for approval from Councilman Williams, Councilmember Butler Barlow.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Butler Barlow. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We'll now move to announcements and comments. At this time, I'll ask me the Community Relations Director, Jennifer Moore. She has any announcements.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, City Manager. I'll kick off the announcements tonight with the breaking news, literally, from the Suffolk Public Library as they broke ground on their new central library this afternoon, April seventeenth. The two hundred guests in attendance were excited in the anticipation of the new two-story thirty-eight-hundred-square-foot facility that will serve as a cultural hub for our citizens to learn, discover, and build a sense of community. This eighteen-month project has an anticipated completion date of fall 2025. On Thursday, April eleventh, Suffolk Fire and Rescue graduated twenty-six firefighters from the Hampton Roads Regional Fire Academy, class fifty-five and fifty-six. With a packed auditorium at Kings Fork High School, these bright men and women were celebrated as they were pinned up by family members and will soon begin their careers in fire stations across the city. Speaking of family, there were four graduates that are sons of current or retired Suffolk firefighters, staying true to their motto of "Our family protecting yours." The Suffolk Police Department is excited to announce their recent staff promotions. On April tenth, friends, family, and members of the Suffolk Police Department came together at the Suffolk Center for Cultural Arts to celebrate and recognize the promotion of twenty-one members of the department, which included one captain, seven lieutenants, nine sergeants, one master police officer, and three communication lead operators. Keep Suffolk Beautiful is excited to share that the Great Suffolk Cleanup continues. On Friday, April twelfth, they partnered with over four hundred volunteer sailors from the pre-commissioning unit John F. Kennedy Aircraft Carrier for a citywide cleanup effort across Suffolk. The results: six hundred and five volunteer hours, four hundred and ten bags of trash, and twenty tires, which totals an estimated ten thousand five hundred pounds. A big thank you to commanding officer Colin Day and the service members involved that helped to make Suffolk shine a little brighter. Suffolk Economic Development Department is thrilled to announce the grand opening of Gourmet Burger Bistro in downtown Suffolk. The gourmet burger bistro menu features gourmet burgers crafted with premium ingredients and unique flavor combinations, offering both traditional flavors and unique creations. Gourmet Burger Bistro promises something for everyone's taste. For more information, visit gourmetburgerbistro.com. And City Treasurer Ron Williams is hosting the Second Annual Tax Relief Seminar on Tuesday, April twenty-third, from two to four P.M. at Suffolk City Hall. Presentations will be made by the Commissioner of the Revenue, City Assessor, Department of Social Services, and City Treasurer regarding the real estate and personal property tax relief application process. For more information or to register for this free event, call five one four four two eight eight. Iconicon, the Free Library Fan Convention, returns to Suffolk. This exciting event will be held at the North Suffolk Library on Saturday, April twenty-seventh, from ten A.M. to three P.M. Iconicon welcomes fans of all ages to come together and celebrate their favorite books, movies, games, and TV shows. Attendees can look forward to exciting competitions, including Super Smash Brothers Ultimate Tournaments, a cosplay contest, and fan arts contests. Family-friendly activities include trivia, demos, and dancing. Whether you're a fan of sci-fi, fantasy, or gaming, there will be something for everyone. For more information, visit SuffolkPublicLibrary.com. The Suffolk Earth and Arts Festival is thrilled to announce that more than one hundred and thirty-five vendors will be participating in this year's event. Organized jointly by Keep Suffolk Beautiful and Suffolk Art League, the festival will take place on Main Street in historic downtown Suffolk this Saturday, April twentieth, ten A.M. to four P.M. The event will feature a diverse array of artists, crafters, musicians, and farmers, offering their own art and products. For more information, visit SuffolkArtLeague.com. And in celebration of the city's fiftieth anniversary, Suffolk Parks and Rec is planting fifty trees throughout the city. Civic leagues and homeowners associations are encouraged to apply to receive one of the trees. Organizations will be able to select from eight different native species. The trees will be planted in common areas such as parks and community buildings and cannot be planted in private residences. Organizations can access the application online at SuffolkVA.us. And registration is now open for the Suffolk Police Department Senior Citizens Academy. This year, the academy will be held on Wednesdays from nine A.M. to noon from June fifth through August fourteenth at Suffolk Police Headquarters. During the academy, students will learn about law enforcement history, driving course demonstrations, crime scene investigations, crime prevention tips, and more. The students will also receive an overview of the department, including its assets, capabilities, and personnel. The deadline for application is May twenty-fourth, and applications can be found online at SuffolkPD.com. And lastly, on your screen are the various ways for residents and businesses to stay connected to the city of Suffolk. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Ms. Moore, we'll now move on to announcements from council. Councilman Rector.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Whoops, I got you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did attend the Suffolk Police Promotion Ceremony that was held at the Suffolk Center for the Cultural Arts. Chief Bowie, congratulations to all the fine men and women of our law enforcement community for their hard work and dedication to keeping our city safe. I also attended the Fire Academy graduation ceremony that was held at Kings Fork High School. That was also a very impressive affair. I think they graduated, like Jennifer said, two classes and twenty-six new fire people, which are going to be a great addition for the city. And then I also went to the opening of the gourmet burger bistro on East Washington Street. And I think that was a combination ribbon-cutting, block party, and revival session. It was, I thought, Chief, I was thought we were going to have to call you in to direct traffic and do some crowd control. But I wish them much continued success and hope that they do well, and I think it's going to be a great addition to the downtown business community. And then a couple of nights ago, along with the mayor and a couple of other, the vice mayor and I believe Leotis, we were at the CAPS Blessing Banquet. And that was great to go and hear about all the great things that CAPS is doing for our community. And they also, we were treated to some testimonials from some folks that the CAPS organization has helped in the last couple of years. And it's always nice to, you know, I think at one time or another, just about all of us have been at the point where we were literally one paycheck away from disaster. Fortunately, most of us don't run into that disaster, but a lot of people do, and they just need a little bit of help to get them over there, over that hump. And that's what CAPS does an excellent job of doing. Monday night, I want to thank the Fire Department and Dominion Power. A little bit before the storm, I was sitting in my living room watching TV when my lights started to flicker a little bit, and I looked around at one of the lamps that was really going crazy. And out of the corner of my eye, it looked like a Roman candle going off in the back corner of my yard. And being, you know, somewhat of an idiot, I jumped up and said, oh, look, our neighbors have got a fire pit going. And my wife corrected me and said, nobody starts a fire pit. Ten minutes before an electrical storm is about ready to come. So I looked out there a little bit more and realized that actually the ground had caught on fire from the sparks that came from the overhead lines where a tree limb, I guess, had fallen on it. So at that point, I went into Keystone Cop mode, and I threw the phone at my wife and I said, get ready to call nine one one. I'm going to go get a fire extinguisher. And I ran around to the side of the house and tried to open the basement door, but I didn't have my keys with me, and it was locked. So I had to go back around to the front of our house, run through, get in the basement, get my fire extinguisher. By that time, the fire was growing. So I told my wife, I said, call nine one one. We got to get the Fire Department here. And she said, I have an Apple phone. This is an Android. I don't know how to work it. So I had to run back, get the phone, call nine one one, and I'm running through the backyard trying to talk to the Fire Department. Well, we got back there, amazingly enough, my thirteen-year-old fire extinguisher put out the fire, for the most part, before the Fire Department came. But they did come, secure the scene, make sure everything was put out, and then one of the firefighters looked up at the wires and he said, you know, I just don't like the way those look. He said, something's really wrong there, and it's not going to last. So they called in Dominion Power, and those poor guys from Dominion Power, God bless them. That guy was up the ladder, leaned up against the pole in a pouring down rain with lightning going on all around him, but they got the situation secured. So thank you for the Fire Department, and thank you for Dominion, for Dominion Power, and I hope nobody caught that on video.
Councilman Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief. Just would like to say that I attended the Central Library Groundbreaking today. It's been a long time coming, and I am glad to finally see it come to fruition. To library staff, to Gary Jones and his department, great job. To our first responders, fire rescue, rescue, and the Police Department, thank you for all you do for our city. To the Departments of Public Works, Public Utilities, Park and Rec, AL, and the manager's office and staff, and to all our city employees. I'd like to thank each and every one for their commitment to making our city the best city in Virginia. And with that, I'd like to say good night.
Councilman Fawcett.
I'm going to be briefer than John. But anyway, thank you, Mayor. The police promotional you had, Chief Bowie, was just spot on. Also, the Fire Academy graduation, you know, it's just amazing to see the new people coming on, or the ones that got promoted. So it shows really a forward motion for our personnel. So I want to thank you and Chief Rocky and putting on, along with his staff, your staff, and all the others that may be involved. Great, great. It was just great. I can't say more than that. The groundbreaking for the library today was, I mean, yes, it's been a long, I remember when it went in the CIP. That's how long ago it was, and it's been a long way back. So this is going to be a game changer for our city and our downtown. This is really going to be something that everybody is going to have an opportunity to go there, visit, learn, whatever. And I appreciate Gary Jones. I know we bust you a lot on projects, you know, and the city manager's office and all the staff that comes together, because this, this is a team effort when we do something like this. This isn't one-sided by any means, along with all the colleagues up here on this dius to make sure that we get things approved so that we can move forward. So I want to thank everybody that was involved. It was a, it was a good show of people today. Good, I mean, it was exciting to see the young folks come up and get their shovels and scoop some dirt and be a part of that. So that's the start of a new beginning for us with all the young people and others alike. So with that, I want to say a shout out to our military that came over and participated. I didn't get the chance to go out there, but just by the photograph, you could see the number of folks that came over from, I think it was Cary Group that came over, yeah, John F. Kennedy. It's amazing that when you ask them to come out and do a project, you know, they just don't bring a few people. They bring, you know, hundreds of people to come out and do this. So I want to say thank you to our U.S. Navy. I was a part of that fantastic group of guys and gals, and I just think we do extraordinary things, and they do as well. So I want to thank them for coming to Suffolk and taking part. Just manager, for you being there. And for you, Jennifer, and all your folks for being involved in that. Appreciate it. With that, Mayor, I think I'm going to call it a night. I think we've had a good night.
Righty, we're staying along with it. Councilmember Butler Barlow.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, it's been a really full agenda tonight, and the first thing I would like to say is I appreciate staff and citizen input and everybody that got up to speak tonight. It's really helpful to hear how people are feeling about projects and just appreciate everybody's input. Wanted to mention the Library Groundbreaking, which is great, great to see such a big crowd, great to have that project finally started. And I think in conjunction with that, we tonight approved the formation of downtown advisory committee. So I think that's hand in hand, all good news for downtown Suffolk and for all the citizens of Suffolk to get our downtown. It's just great to have so much going on. I think that's wonderful. We've had a busy agenda as a council. We're working, you know, through the budget. We met with the school board last week. We're still dealing with the comprehensive plan, lots of meetings with that. And it's a little overwhelming, but I think we have a lot of support and appreciate the time and effort that's going into all of the planning and all of those projects. Also, just one other ribbon-cutting, there's been a bunch, but the gallery at Godwin this past week, which was, they had champagne. What can we say? Really interesting project and a very different type of housing opportunities for folks in that part of the Chuck-Tuck Borough and a really lovely facility. So I was glad to attend that. And, you know, always got to mention, it's planting season, the equipment is rolling, and it's, I just want to say, everybody stay safe out there, and I hope it's a good growing season and, you know, just slow down, we'll be out of your way in a minute. Thank you and good night.
Councilman Bennett.
Thank you. I'll be very brief. I'll try to, anyway. I would like to say, starting out, that I'd like to thank all the people that came out tonight and had comments. But one thing that sort of got my ear, I didn't make any comments during the public hearing about the budget, but a person from social, senior service was asking for more funding for people that they are feeding. I would like for us to take a look at that and see, it's not a lot more. I don't think they're saying one hundred and thirty thousand, but I think it's, yeah, one hundred and thirty thousand.
Seventy.
Seventy thousand. But they were asked to go up to one hundred and thirty, I think.
You're good with seventy.
Yeah. So anyway, I would like for us to take a look at that. If we have that many seniors that need a meal, I think we should consider that and try to find some way of coming up with that. Western Tire Water Free Clinic, I know that we are, most of us were there when they opened up, the new dental clinic and all, and that has really helped a lot of our people that had, need the service that hadn't been able to get it. So I hope that we will take a look at that. And with the Geneva Shelter, they are doing a great job with trying to help people that have problems and keeping them safe. And maybe we should revisit the, where we have the moratorium on, on the properties. I would like for us to just take a look at that and come back and see if we can't do something to help them because of what they are doing to help the citizens of Suffolk. I didn't write the numbers down, but she gave the number of people that they are serving here in our city. And that will be a great help with, till we get the other homeless shelter in operation. Also, I would like to say that to Gary Jones, I know we've been working, waiting on this for twenty-five years. I know you are happy, this may be your retirement, close to your retirement party when that's done, but I think you'll be very pleased with being a part of that. And, you know, I was telling Councilman Barlow, it's been twenty-five years. And, you know, I was telling Councilman Barlow, it's been 25 years. And when we started that project, we was going to do two libraries at the same time, one in northern Suffolk and the one downtown, because both of us needed it. Then council got together and said, "Well, northern Suffolk doesn't have a library at all. Why don't we take the money that we have downtown and do the northern library, where we just continue to fund the one downtown?" But after we built one up in the northern end, we stopped funding the one downtown. So now I appreciate the council and all, and the manager and all, for us to get together, to see this day come, that we finally has got a design, ground broke, and all that to move forward with this library. So I'm just thrilled to death that I was able to see a part of this take place. And that just thrilled my heart today, just to be there for that grand occasion. Also, I want to give a shout out to Marshall, the gentleman that came up and spoke about the people in Public Works. I think he's a person that have the workers at heart. And I think y'all might recall, wasn't too long ago, he came and gave us a big speech about the people in Public Works, what they were doing. And I tell you, that means a lot to those men and women that work out there under him and your department, to know that you all care that much, that their supervisor, boss, will come and stand up for them like that. I really do appreciate it. I mean that from the depths of my heart. And to see that many people come up and say thank you for what we are trying to do to help them. So I just wanted to make sure that I got that out there. Mr. Butler was with me last night up in northern Suffolk about assessment. I want to thank you for being there for me and with me. And I think we had a good meeting. And there was quite a few questions asked, but he was able to give them all an answer. So I don't think we'll have much repercussion from the meeting that we had there last night. And now I have a couple of requests, Mr. Manager. I haven't been able to get, I got a call today on the corner of Truman Road and Riddick Drive. It's a corner lot. I don't have, it's not a house there. And they're calling about the grass need to be cut. And I can call tomorrow and give it to someone if you will be fine. But I just wanted to put that out there tonight, that we did have that. And I did attend the promotion of the Fire, of the Police Department and the Fire Department graduation. And that was, all that was great. So with that, I will shut up.
Okay. Councilman Johnson?
I like being last. Everything's been said. Thank you, guys. Thanks to everyone that came out tonight. It's really nice to have the input from the public. And Robert, for your guys that came from Public Works, I'm like Leroy. It's so impressive. Good guys, and they appreciate their city and their jobs. And three things is all I'm going to say. If you don't have anything to do this weekend, you're not looking around. The Earth and Arts Festival in downtown Suffolk, people, you don't want to miss it. Especially if you're new to Suffolk. It's a wonderful event. River View Garden Tour, if you want to see a garden, it's this weekend. It's Saturday. And then, if all else fails, go to Holland to Miss Lily's Trading Post. She's got a grand opening coming up at 10 o'clock on Saturday morning. It's a new shop that sells all kinds of things in Holland. So let's give her a little support. And with that, I'll say good night. Enjoy spring.
Placemayor Ward?
Yeah, like Councilman Johnson said, a lot of things have been said, said well. No sense of repeating it. But I did attend the fires fighter, Chief Baraki did a great, real good speech, talking about going down memory lane. I thought that was very much to see how he got to where he is now. So I thought that was sort of a good, good speech to understand the history of a man such as him in the Fire Department. And we talk about the library. It was kind of encouraging when Clint Rudy, he always have done more with less. And he always puts some type of energy in the library part. But when he said that I spoke to him about 11 years ago about the library that I used to go to, the Chesapeake one, and that's during the time when my kids were in school, well, it was good that he remembered that because it's like, I was almost shocked to hear that. But he's a good man. And one thing about it, my friend Gary Jones is going to build it, and Clint Rudy is going to work it. So that's a good combination there. I'm going to be proud of that library, just like I'm going to be proud of my fire station up there in Huntersville. So with that, I'll say God bless.
Roy, I'll go ahead and close it up, trying to be as brief as possible. The gallery at Godwin, like Councilmember Butler-Barlow alluded to, it's the first business ribbon cutting with ice cream and what have you, but never champagne at 11 o'clock in the morning. So we didn't, we didn't drink much. I watched it. She didn't need any help getting them. And Councilman Ward was there also, but I mean, it was kind of special to me because I went by it. I figured in the time it took them to start it and the time it took them to finish it, I actually went by that development about 1,600 times because it was back and forth to work every day, plus some other times. So I literally saw it go up from, you know, from ground up. And then looking at it, it was hard for me conceptually to figure out what was happening because it was so narrow. And I was thinking to myself, how are they going to park cars in these different scenarios? And I never realized that they'd have underbuilding, if you will. Parking, they had parking on the ground level. And then the living area, and a lot of it was right above that. But definitely very upscale. And of course, the way I think now, the first thing I do is look, see how much assessed for. So I checked the assessment. It was about $44 million or so. You know, it's hitting the cash register too. So works out, bodes well for the city. But it's a very, very nice development and, like I said, one of the fastest-growing corridors in our city. The Suffolk Police Department promotional ceremony. Badge pinings are great also, but I don't think anything really compares to a promotional ceremony because those people that are getting promoted, those are the back, they are the backbone of your organization, the backbone of the Police Department. They've got the experience. They've got the tenure there. They're the ones that are going to be teaching the officers coming in. And those are the ones that are going to provide that stability, you know, through the years. All the other ones will come and go. So congratulations to all of them. I went to the Portsmouth chapter of the Military Officers Association, asked me to speak. The enforcement, Roger Brown's, but almost half the people there were actually Suffolk residents. You know, most of them lived in Lake Prince. So I saw a few faces that I actually knew there. Great organization, Gourmet Burger Bistro. Councilman Rector already spoke to that. They definitely had it going on. I had to get back to work, but understanding he had a burger. They were pretty good. And he's got a couple of other stories. So once again, this is a downtown initiative, something else unique to bring folks to downtown. And then later on that evening, I went to the 100th anniversary celebration for producers Peanut, Jimmy, and Kathy Pond, and got a history on Pond Brothers Peanuts and another 100-year anniversary in our city. The CAPS banquet last night, Coalition Against Poverty in Suffolk, they talked about. They had some volunteer recognition fundraiser and also had some testimonials, the people that they actually helped, which is also, I mean, it's firsthand what they're doing. The library groundbreaking, I mean, everybody's already talked about it. I mean, it's huge. It is a deal breaker for, I mean, a deal maker for downtown. It's going to be an integral part of the revitalization of downtown and attraction that's going to keep people going there. And I can't wait for that to get done. I did miss one other thing in regards to the Police Department. On April 15th, I was reading the Virginia Pilot, and they had an article about homicides over the last year and talked about statistics in different cities. It's about three pages, but city of Suffolk homicides were now 15% last year. We had 11. And then they talked about the highest clearance rates. Virginia Beach was highest, then Chesapeake, and then Suffolk. We had a 73% clearance rate on homicides, at 73%, compared to Hampton, 61, Portsmouth, 59, Norfolk, 50, and Newport News, 44. So great job, Chief, getting that job done. And with that, I'm going to go to the quote of the night, and the quote of the night has to do with libraries. And this one is about a library card. There was actually many, many good quotes about libraries. This one is from Liba Bray, and it talks about a library card. And I know Councilman Rector held up his library card and said, "I'm ready to, you know, for Gary to get it done, be the first one through the door." And that is, "The library card is a passport to wonders and miracles, glimpses into other lives, religions, experiences, the hopes and dreams and strivings of all human beings. And it is this passport that opens our eyes and hearts to the world beyond our front doors. That is one of our best hopes against tyranny, xenophobia, hopelessness, despair, anarchy, and ignorance." And with that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Councilman Williams? Throw a move. Got a motion to adjourn? Councilman Williams, Councilman Fawcett?
Second is motion.
Second from Councilman Fawcett. Any discussion of motion? Hearing none. Council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
This meeting stands adjourned.